Council for Monday, April 24th, 2017. At this time, can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember DeRocset.
Here.
Councilmember Lane.
Here.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Here.
Councilmember Rhino.
Here.
And Mayor Viera.
Thank you. Here. Next, we have the invocation by Ira Henry from the Valley View Church of the Nazarene.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for today. We thank you for our council members. We ask that you give them wisdom tonight. Let their work today be productive. We thank you, Lord, for our city. We ask, Lord, that you bless it. Watch over our police force. Protect them as they protect us. And we thank you for our firefighters, Lord. Protect them as they also protect us. We ask this all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we should stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no presentations this evening. Citizens communication to council on matters not included on the agenda. While the City Council welcomes and encourages participation in City Council meetings, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the City Council and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the City Council from taking action on any matter which is not on the posted agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the City Council. Citizens are entitled to address the City Council on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. Also, as a reminder, we do have the lighting up on the podium. When you get to the last minute, it'll go from green to yellow, and then that last minute, when it hits five, it'll turn red. And at that point, we'd kind of ask you, comments be finished up at that time. So with that, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on a non-agenda item?
Leonard Shepherd, 2841 Fowler Road. I think Series and all the surrounding cities and Stanislaus County, maybe it's a plague up and down the valley, but we've got some of the worst drivers that I have ever come across. I have driven since I was 16 years old, and I'm 73, and the drivers keep getting more and more rude, careless, don't give a... And I don't know what to... You know, I live on Fowler Road, and I call it Fowler Speedway. Between Mitchell and Rose, they can get up to 45, 50 miles an hour. Then they gotta slam on their brakes to slow down. And I wondered, where did they all get their driver's licenses? You know, I had a friend for a while from Louisiana, and he said, "Oh, they're terrible in Louisiana," because at 16, you could get your driver's license, and it was for life. I don't know whether it's still that way or not, but he said, they had so many... He was in the fire service. He said they had so many calls for wrecks and stuff where he was from, that they finally just opened a station out on the freeway, by the freeway, so they didn't have to go so far. And I think that's the way it's starting to look here. Highway 99 is, well, just a couple days ago, shut down for several hours because of a really horrendous wreck. I mean, it's... And we have a fine police department, but they're shorthanded. It'd take about 40 officers just doing nothing but traffic control to bring the traffic under control in this city, just in this city, the way people drive. So all I can say is, be careful. They might run over your fence, or they might hit your car, or... I know Ken's not smiling, but it's terrible what happens when people get into a dangerous machine that weighs six, 7,000 pounds and don't have any consideration for what it takes to stop that misguided missile. So be careful out there. Watch yourselves, because whether you are expecting it or not, there's going to be an idiot either in front of you, or back of you, or right beside you. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the council on a non-agenda item?
Hi. I have two questions. My name is Basquale Sabatka. I live in Series. First one is, Mayor, are you available on the 29th of May at Series Cemetery for a guest speaker?
I'll have to take a look at my schedule, but if I'm available, sure.
I went to your office a little while back there, about a month or so, spoke to the secretary, and she was trying to see if she could set that up.
Okay.
So I'm here just to ask, as a reminder, it would be an honor to have you there as a guest.
Okay.
Two question is, is Series prepared for the Islamic Muslims that's going on throughout the United States and the activities that they're doing with violence in the nation? So I'm just trying to want to know, is our city, being so small as it is, is it prepared and ready for such an action?
That's a good question. I don't know. I would have to ask staff. I'm not familiar with that. So...
I wanted to bring that up so we can be ready for it in case it does come, because it's hitting throughout the United States. It's not just like New York or I heard, we already had one in Los Angeles, but I just wanted to be, to know if we are.
Okay.
This, under this section. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Do we have your contact info... Do you... Diane, do we have his contact information? Okay, thank you.
Pardon?
We have your contact information. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
I'm the commander at our post there in Series, so contact me there.
Gotcha. Anyone else that would like to speak to the council on a non-agenda item? Okay. With that, we will move on to appointments to boards and commissions. We have none this evening. Conflict of interest declaration. Is there anyone on the council that would like to declare a conflict of interest on any of the consent calendar, new business, or public hearing items? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or the public for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by roll call vote. This time, is there anyone on the council that would like a consent calendar item pulled for further discussion? Anyone in the audience that would like a consent calendar item pulled for further discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'll bring it back to the council for direction.
Move to approve 123A45ABCDEF.
Second. We have a motion by Councilmember DeRocset and a second by Vice Mayor Klein. Can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember DeRocset.
Yes.
Councilmember Lane.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
And Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. We have no unfinished business this evening. New business? Item number six, review terms of resolution number 2011-76, resolution approving city utility repayment agreement policy. Ms. Dean? Or Mr. Wells? Not sure.
Well, he... I'll go ahead and start this off. You may have some questions for Ms. Dean, but the item this evening is a follow-up from a couple meetings ago where we had some interest from a number of residents in the North Series area or South Modesto, there north of Hatch, who had some challenges with payment of bills related to some discovered sewer connections in that area. And so per council direction, you asked us to look at extending the payment terms for those individuals. And so what we've done here is presented the resolution that this council approved back in 2011 that we feel meets the criteria necessary to move forward to satisfy these folks. We don't feel that there's anything necessary to be changed. Your direction, we believe, is clear, and we believe that that falls under the provisions already included in the resolution, specifically under Section F on page of your council package. It would be the item six, page F, about four pages in, regarding the hardship. And in essence, it gives the finance director some broad discretion there to meet the intent that the council has already given us direction on. We just want to ensure that you're comfortable with that provision, and we'll move forward with the residents to resolve this issue. What we will need from the residents is for them to provide us information and evidence of the hardship consistent with this provision, and then we'd be able to offer those terms and conditions to the folks out there that are affected by this issue. So with that, we're available for any questions. If you'd like to change the resolution, we're open to that, but we do feel that this provides us the avenue to resolve this issue with the residents out there. We would just need their cooperation. Obviously, we would meet with them and give them this information and ask them to provide the hardship information so that we could move forward.
Okay. Councilmember Lane?
Yeah, Toby, under terms, I guess that's all negotiable, because in here, does it say what we said?
Correct. Yeah, under that hardship clause on Section F, it gives the... As long as there's a true hardship, it gives the finance director basically the ability to do any of those terms, and the council has given the direction of what you'd like to see up to the five years. And under that provision, she has the right to do that. We just need, again, the information from the residents that there's a true hardship. Once we have that documentation in writing and it's specified, then we can be able to offer those terms.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? At this time, I'll open this item up to the public. Is there anyone that would like to address the council on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for direction.
Move to approve resolution number 2011-76.
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember DeRocset.
Sorry, the resolution's already approved.
Okay, so it's just a...
That's right. It's the residents.
Yeah. So you actually don't need to take any action unless you would like to.
Confirm.
You can confirm. That's fine.
Okay. All right. We will confirm that we are good with resolution number 2011-76. So with that, we will move on to the public hearing. Item number seven, this item will be continued to our May 8th, 2017 meeting. Is a public hearing to consider ordinance number 2017-1039, amending ordinance number 2015-1035 marijuana cultivation and delivery, sections 18.04.002, definitions and interpretive provisions, and 18.46.20B, prohibited uses of the City of Series Municipal Code to allow a development agreement for the case manufacturing project located at 4111 Brewmaster Drive. At this time, again, this item will be continued to May 8th, 2017. At this time, we will open it up for the public, for anyone that would like to comment, but the council won't be commenting, and we won't be hearing this item this evening. It will be heard and addressed on May 8th. So with that, I will open it up to the general public to see if anyone would like to comment at this time. Okay, with that, we will keep that item open. Is that correct?
Excuse me, Mayor, we just need a motion to continue to that date, sir.
Okay.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember DeRocset.
Yes.
Councilmember Lane.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
And Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll move on to item number eight, public hearing to consider ordinance number 2017-1040, amending chapter 9.30 of the Series Municipal Code related to fireworks sales and section 15.10.150 of the Series Municipal Code relating to safe and sane fireworks sales. Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Mayor. This item was directed by council back in September, followed up from an item, a memo that was prepared after the Fourth of July holiday last year regarding the proliferation of illegal fireworks that were seen within the community and around the valley. So as a result of that council direction, we prepared an ordinance this evening for your consideration that, in essence, moves the enforcement of illegal fireworks from being a state code violation to a municipal code violation with the ability to cite those individuals that are violating that code section with up to $1,000, again, per council direction. The ordinance is included in your staff report. We did make a few minor adjustments today that are attached here at the dais, some clarifications. In essence, what we did was we took the existing ordinance, Section 15, which delineates the process for the safe and sane process fireworks, moved that into a new section where we have the code sections for the illegal fireworks and the safe and sane all in the same section. So we brought the older version of the safe and sane permit process for our nonprofits. We brought that over exactly as it was, but there's a few clarifications and cleanup items that were necessary that we've included this evening there in the red line copy here on the dais for you. Again, just some minor adjustments and edits related to timing and state laws that have changed since the last time we adopted that ordinance. So the ordinance here for you this evening would be to introduce the first reading and move forward with that. We would come, we would follow up at the next meeting, if it is approved, with a resolution to set the fees for the nonprofits for going forward as part of the process of our normal permitting for nonprofits within the community for the safe and sane fireworks. Available for any questions you may have.
Okay. Vice Mayor Klein?
Mr. Wells, after reading this thing, and I did see where you answered some of my previous questions, but I didn't see anything in here where it said the projected cost for chasing down or what the expenditures were for 2016 with the amount of illegal fireworks that were on here, or man-hours dedicated to that?
Yeah, we did not have a dedicated effort in 2016 towards that effort, so it was just some minimal overtime associated with the staffing that we had for the fire department was delineated in the July 4th memo, as well as a little bit from the police departments. We did not have any excess costs because we didn't have this tool in the toolbox, per se, to go enforce it. As we discussed, as the current law reads, in order for someone to be cited, there has to be physical, visible evidence of somebody seeing the person light it, and then DA has to prosecute that. It's a pretty high threshold and a pretty difficult bar, and it is very difficult to get prosecutions for that today. So hence, the enforcement is very difficult under the current law. This ordinance would allow anybody within our city that's deputized to be able to cite the site location of where those illegal fireworks were cited. Very broad.
So to me, that's... I mean, to me, it's very broad because there's no substantial cost related to where the PD was taken away from certain calls to respond to the illegal fireworks, or where fire was going and chasing stuff that wasn't there, or anything like that? I mean, you did list the amount of calls and what the calls were for and, you know, and that, but...
It's difficult to estimate what our costs would be this year. We really have to see how that goes one particular year to get an idea what the magnitude is. This would be a first. So there would be costs associated with it. Obviously, if we get folks to pay their fines, it would be obviously offset by those costs if we fine folks.
Well, when you bring this back, is there a way that you can determine, you can show us what the last previous years, what the added staff was? You know, for instance, compared to 2013, I mean, 14, 15, and 16, as far as added personnel?
But, I mean, we can bring that information, but it's in essence, one person, but there was no directed enforcement. So what we're, would be doing is a directed enforcement activity. It's kind of an apples and oranges comparison to compare what we did in the past to what we would do, would have the ability to do this year.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Okay, at this time, I will open this item up to the public. Is there anyone who would like to speak on item number eight? If so, please come forth, state your name.
Leonard Shepherd. I think the worst thing that people can do in the summertime is fireworks. I think that if you ask anybody, especially up in the foothills and the mountains, what holiday they hate the most, they tell you Fourth of July. Starting from about the 30th of June, all the way till about the 15th of July, idiots are out there with... And don't let yourselves be fooled. They're not safe, and they're not sane. There are people, you can make those things, do things they're not supposed to, to blow up and so forth. There have been lots of cases where people have lost fingers, eyes, all of that, to safe and sane fireworks. I spent 20-some years, 20 years in Calaveras County, and every Fourth of July, we ran almost day and night for three or four days because of illegal and safe and sane fireworks. I just don't understand why we can't, as a city, say, okay, no more. They're banned totally. I know there are people that say, "That's how we make money. We'll find another way." It's unsafe at any level. You see parents letting little kids play with sparklers? 1,500 degrees that stuff's burning at, and you had a little kid waving it around? Doesn't make sense. I just, I've said it, I probably say it every year at Fourth of July. This is a little early now, but I'll say it again. Don't allow fireworks in Series, any kind. And that, to me, just about says it all, because if you blithely let them do it and somebody gets hurt, and, oh, it was legal, they were safe and sane, it's not on my neck, it's on yours. Because there's no safe and sane fireworks.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Don Pasquale, TNT Fireworks. We're just here to show our support with the fire service on combating the illegal problem. We know it is a statewide issue. We've come up with a few things that can assist the cities in attacking that, and with, especially with you adopting the administrative fine this evening, hopefully, to enforce that and start battling this issue. Anyway, here to answer any questions if you have them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on this item? Okay, I'll bring it back to the council for direction and more discussion.
Any takers?
Well, I don't think we have to...
I'll do it.
Yep.
I move to have this ordinance be read by title and number only.
Second. Can we have a motion in a second? Can we have the clerk please read the ordinance?
Ordinance number 2017-140, amending chapter 9.30 of the Series Municipal Code related to fireworks sales in section 15.10.150 of the Series Municipal Code relating to safe and sane fireworks sales.
All right, I think we've changed this policy too, right? Where we don't have to read these any longer? All right, well, we'll have it die hard. So, okay, so now that means that we need to take action on this, or it comes back to... Okay.
After that motion, then, a motion to introduce it would be in order. After you vote on this one. Or you can...
So I'll call the roll.
Or you could rescind that and just vote to introduce the ordinance, either way.
Does he still have to make the motion?
Yes.
So do you want to amend your motion?
Sure. You could add introducing the ordinance to the motion, and a third way to do it, yes.
You're good with that?
Yes, I'm good.
Okay. So he's amended his motion for the roll call, please.
Right. Councilmember DeRocset.
Yes.
Councilmember Lane.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
And Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, now we will move on to item number nine, one discussion item, fire service review. Mr. Wells?
Apologize, little technical difficulties. Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. This evening, we were presenting a fire service review. It will be a tag-team effort by myself, Chief Nichols, and Battalion Chief Gomes, and kind of broken it up into three pieces. I'll do the overview, and I'll turn it over to Chief Nichols. The purpose of this conversation, as was directed by the council back in February at our goal-setting meeting, was to conduct this overview of the fire department, look for some options to consider. So what we'll be covering this evening is kind of from a high level, kind of dropping down into the details. So we'll overview the Stanislaus County Fire Departments and the districts that are kind of surrounding us and how those interact with the Series Fire Department. We'll look into the calls and the detailed call volumes and response times that we've seen really in detail over the last year, 2016, how our department is currently structured, some of the limitations that we currently are seeing, as well as a conversation regarding the resource sharing with our partner agencies, the financial considerations, the cost challenges that we're facing as a city. Look for consideration of options and then council directions. So with that, I will turn it over to Chief Nichols.
Before you do, just a question. Do you want us to hold our questions till the end, or do them as they go along?
You can go them as you like. It's up to you. These guys are comfortable. They can move.
If anyone has a question, just push your light, and I'll call on you.
Honorable Mayor, council members, good evening. Just as City Manager said, I'm gonna start out and do a little bit of the, kind of the overview of the fire service in Stanislaus County, and then kind of go down into our own particular department. As you can see on the maps that are in front of you, this is just an overview of our county. Each different color represents a different fire department. I apologize, the map is kind of difficult to see. The little spot right in the middle that's pink is Series. As we go through this, we'll break that down a little bit further, and then you'll kind of get a better picture of where we're at. So start off with the Series Fire Protection District. This fire district is to our east and to the south of the City of Series. It is predominantly an unincorporated area. However, there are several large businesses, such as B&amp;H Manufacturing, that are located out in that area. They do, we do provide contract to them, under contract of service, to provide medical and fire calls only. Series Fire Protection District was actually formed in 1930. It has a population of about 1,962 people, approximately four square miles or 2,539 acres. City of... The best we could find, that our agreement began with them in 1970s. It's been amended several times. They do pay us under contract, as I spoke earlier, to provide protection for them. Our industrial fire protection district, which actually used to be a complete separate district, up protected the kind of South Modesto area, the North Series area, for lack of a better term. Our predominantly, in our area, was the South Ninth Street corridor, and then along the no-man's land, along the river. This is an area that was kind of divided and split up when the district went away. Modesto got part of it, we got the other part of it. They actually took the station that's on Imperial. We took the station that was on Pecos. This district is fairly large. We have several islands. You can see the white islands within the City of Series Fire Department purple area. Those are islands that they actually, at that time, traveled through our city to get to their islands. This actually worked out well for us because we could protect those areas. This district was actually originally formed in 1950s. In fact, our station two that we currently operate out of on Pecos is, was built in 1964, so it is the oldest station that we have. They have approximately 15,841 residents in that area. That's permanent residents, that doesn't include the migratory residents that come in and out of that area, or those that work in that area. It's approximately three square miles, 1,946 acres. We originally started a contract service with them in about 1993 to provide some protection back and forth, and then the JPA was actually formed between Modesto and Series for that area in 2007. Part of that, we got one station, Modesto got the other. The boundaries are roughly split. Forty-five percent of it is Series, 55% of it is Modesto, and that's pretty much the way that the cost sharing is done also. The Westport Fire Protection District, it basically goes from our westerly borders all the way out to what used to be the Honor Farm. It is a very large area that's out there, approximately 40 square miles. It butts... It butts up not only to our, our city area, but also to our Series Fire Protection District area. Remember, that's where the West Landing came from and we ended up with the West Landing Agreement with part of, for their department. It was originally formed in 1962. Population is approximately twenty-seven thousand, excuse me, twenty-seven hundred and twenty-six people. It's about forty square miles, as I said. Originally, we had an agreement with them, we've had several and they've been modified, but in 2012 to assist with coverage for specific areas because we're actually closer. They are an all volunteer department and they're located on Carpenter Road, so they do have quite a distance to come. The large pallet yard that's right by our Station Three is in their area. So we do vehicle maintenance for them on a limited basis as part of this West Landing annexation, that was part of the deal that was cut for that, and then a property share tax for that, that which helps keep them solvent.
When you're talking about property share tax, you're talking about what we annexed in?
Yes.
Or the, not, just what we annexed into our stations?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and that was to help keep them solvent. There was a large portion of their income actually came from that area. So our supporting areas that provide assistance to us, whether it's equipment or personnel or just manpower and the services they provide, is our, is resource sharing, our Modesto, Series, Stanislaus Consolidated, Turlock Group that we do the resource sharing boundary dropping with, Stanislaus County Office of Emergency Services, California Department of Forestry, our Regional 911, which does all of our dispatching for us and our call taking, and then our ambulance contract through, we have through the local provider, which is AMR. They not only reimburse us for much of our medical equipment, but they're also provide funding to replace the salaries for a firefighter that we use to help transport in a hospital if we send an ambulance with them. That was a thing that we got through there, which worked really well.
Brian, one second on Westport. Did they pass, didn't they just have something on the ballot to raise?
They did. They just had an initiative that went there to, to actually enhance their funding.
Right. Did that pass or?
Yes, it did.
Where did it go from to? You didn't remember?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
I don't have that information. This is a map that kind of lays out where our Series Fire Stations are. As you know, we have four stations. Little difficult to see, but it kind of gives you the spacing on where our stations are. With the West Landing, there was also a Station Five that was planned in that area and that would basically put it between the uppermost, Station Sixteen or the Pecos Avenue Station and Station Seventeen on Service Road. We were originally formed in 1911, an all volunteer department at the time. Our current population that we serve, if you include not just the city, but the industrial area and the Series Fire Protection District, is somewhere between fifty-six thousand and sixty thousand people. An approximate area is fourteen and a half square miles. We do that from four stations. Battalion Chief Gomes, if you'd like to come up. Chief Gomes is going to go over all of our responses.
Thank you, Chief. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'd like to take this opportunity just to explain a little bit about our call volume, some of the types of calls that we go on and I'm going to start with some definitions. I'm going to throw a lot of numbers and figures at you, so if I move too fast, just slow me down and if you have any questions, please feel free to ask. First off, we'll start with some key definitions. When we reference a good intent call, a good intent call includes your calls of scares of smoke, odors of smoke, if we respond to an incident and we don't find an emergency, if we're unable to locate steam or other gas mistaken for smoke or barbecue smoke. If we get dispatched and we're canceled in route to a fire alarm or medical aid call or unauthorized controlled burning, that's all wrapped up in a, what we call a, excuse me, a good intent call. So there's a bunch of other ones that fall into that category, those are just some of the, just a few of them. When we reference pit crew CPR, so basically pit crew CPR is just the name of the CPR that we provide as emergency responders. It's much different than what the layperson learns and, and what they're authorized to provide. Pit crew CPR is just, the name kind of fits it. It's kind of like the pit crew of an automobile race. Everybody on the team has a job and they know what their job is before they even arrive on the scene. And it takes more rescuers to do it and we're usually on scene a lot longer than we normally used to be because studies have shown that performing CPR in the back of an ambulance is not effective. So the decision makers in the county have decided that this is the kind of pit crew that, or CPR that they have trained us to do and we are sometimes on scene performing CPR for up to forty minutes. So response time. A response time is the time it takes a unit, a unit to arrive on scene from the time of dispatch. Pretty simple, pretty self-explanatory. A mutual aid call, mutual aid is a response of an outside agency requested by a responding unit or someone on scene. So if we respond to an incident and we need assistance, we call a mutual aid company if it's not something that's built into the dispatch, which would be an automatic aid. So let's say Keys Fire Department has a response and they need assistance and we're not on the initial alarm to go help them, they will call us for assistance or another agency and that's just mutual aid. So basically, what is it if you ask for help? That's what mutual aid is. Automatic aid is, is similar to mutual aid, but it's just something that's automatic. It's built into the response. So if we get dispatched to a certain call, it's built into our dispatch that we're going to get, you know, different assistance from different agencies. That's kind of what we have and what we have built in with the, our boundary dropping with Modesto, Series, Stanislaus and Turlock. It's basically an automatic aid agreement.
I have a question on the mutual aid. Say we're called, right, and they need all of our fires at the call. Who's covering Series?
We'll, we'll have somebody that will come in and fill our stations. Through the, through the resource sharing, there's a matrix that's built out and one of the, it's usually the battalion chief who's not busy or is not on a call, they will take what we call resource officer and they will strategically place apparatus within the MCS agencies. So typically, if our city is stripped of our, our resources, we will get either somebody from Consolidated, it could be from Turlock or it could be from Modesto and they'll place somebody in the city. And we have a matrix that has priority and the downtown station, obviously fifteen is a priority, that's the first one that we'll get filled.
Okay, so that automatically happens then?
It does.
A question for you on the, the pit crew CPR. How long is it sometimes that you're performing that before?
Up to forty minutes. It depends on what kind of response the patient has to the medications and to the CPR that we're performing. So the, the medic who is on scene is in contact with the doctor and it's the doctor's advice and discretion as to when we cease CPR and it's basically a doctor's order.
So if, and just help me understand, so if a call goes out, there isn't any EMS unit that would arrive before forty minutes?
Can you repeat that?
Okay, so if you're doing CPR on somebody, you, you, you won't have any other support, other entity that's coming to, to relieve you of that?
AMR is there.
The ambulance is there.
The ambulance is on scene.
The medic. The ambulance is there and it usually takes two fire crews to do CPR.
Okay, so they're part of the pit?
They're part of it.
Okay, okay. I thought it was just us as part of that group.
No, it's ambulance and usually two fire apparatus.
Okay. But, but going, just expanding on this, when you're doing pit crew CPR, don't you rotate every five minutes, seven minutes?
Yes, that, that's, that's why it takes the extra people. Because to do, to do proper CPR, it is kind of taxing and, you know, exhausting.
So what it is, you basically, you, you're utilizing everybody on the thing and you're, let's say you're doing part of the, part of the thing and, and you're five, seven minutes in and somebody else takes your spot, you rotate around so you can, you can rest, so you're not doing compressions for forty minutes?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, basically, if I were to just kind of wrap this up a little bit for you. So the paramedic is obviously doing the drugs and starting the IV and doing all these things. The EMT on the ambulance is usually preparing all the drugs and getting everything ready, all the supplies for the, for the medic. It takes two people to manage an airway. So there already we have four. So it takes one person to create the seal on the, the valve bag, valve, valve bag mask that we use and it takes another person to deliver the, the oxygen. So that's four people. Then it takes, there's one person that's getting patient information, patient history and usually dealing with family. And then the other people are rotating in and doing, doing compressions. And they usually will rotate from compressions and then you'll take a, a cycle off and then rotate down to the airway and then so, just kind of make sure we get fresh people in there all the time so we're doing adequate CPR.
What's the success rate on that?
You know, I don't have that information, but that's kind of why they went to this, what they call pit crew CPR. It's, we could probably get that information for you, but it's, the success rate is a lot higher than it used to be. We are seeing more field saves than we have prior to pit crew CPR.
You still use the defibrillators?
Yes.
And which works better, do you know?
Well, if somebody's in a shockable rhythm, I think they're more viable to obviously have a defibrillator to get them going again, but if we're doing CPR, then they're not in a rhythm to be shocked. So we're doing everything for them manually.
So that's why we always have two engines, so.
Yes. The MCST is self-explanatory, that's our resource sharing partners, which is Modesto, Series, Stanislaus Consolidated and Turlock. And then we'll go into quick some functions and responsibilities. Obviously, our number one function is 911 response, which is all the different types of calls that we handle. Some other responsibilities that happen throughout the day include training. Typically, and this is at a minimum, we require two hours of training a day to meet our state standards. Lot of times, we're doing more than that. With the influx of new people that we've been hiring lately, we're spending a lot of time training those, so that's taking a lot of effort and time. We, as you know, we participate in public education and presentations, we're always getting called to go out and, you know, do a display for the school or having tours come down and showing them the fire station. Post-incident cleanup is on there because it's important, an important part of what we do. When we are on scene for a structure fire, sometimes on an average up to two and a half hours, when we return from that call in our back quarters, we're not done. There's bottles to fill, there's equipment to clean up and we're usually on average of an hour per unit to get it back in service and get the bottles changed out and clean up the equipment and restock the ice chest and do all those kinds of things and make sure the equipment is good for the next incident. We have station maintenance that we do, we have a calendar, a monthly calendar and there's different duties on there every day. You know, a lot of janitorial stuff, app, apparatus checks. And we also do hydrant flows for new construction. We are constantly getting requests for hydrant flows. I'm going to get into a little bit of a, just a breakdown of the average on-scene call time. So just a basic EMS call, average time for us to be on scene is fourteen minutes. A motor vehicle accident is thirty-one minutes. A motorcycle, an MVA or accident on the freeway is a little bit longer just because usually accidents on the freeway are a little bit more serious and we may require to be on scene to secure the, the scene or to make it safe for CHP or LTO or whoever, whoever it is. Pit crew CPR, like I said, up to forty minutes, so the average time is thirty-eight minutes. Depending on, just getting back to pit crew CPR, depending on what kind of rhythm the paramedic will see on the monitor, it may be something to where, okay, now they're in a certain rhythm, we need to be on scene and they do have a thing they call ROSC and there's an acronym for what that means. And so basically, we have to have certain parameters for five minutes before they are able to transport them. So sometimes they'll be in that rhythm for a few minutes and then they'll go what we call a systole, which is flatline and then we're back to doing CPR again. This kind of little information here about our average response time for total calls for 2016, it's four point, four point five one minutes total.
What's the comparison to that to other stations, other cities?
It's pretty comparable to other cities. It's probably right in there with the average. You know, obviously the, the rural agencies are obviously a lot longer or like probably doubled or even more. Just an example of a typical day, we just pull these days from some of the briefings that we have sent out. These are just some of the types of the calls that we have ran. For example, on April eighth, 2016, we had fourteen EMS calls, one natural gas leak, one motor vehicle accident, one water rescue, two commercial fire alarms and two working structure fires. So if you go back to this previous slide to the amount of time we spend on scene on a call, if you add those, all those calls up and the amount of time that we spent on those calls, on April eighth, we spent ten point two hours on scene of emergency calls. On July sixteenth, where we had a few more calls and a couple of different fires, we spent twelve and a half hours on scene of a call. And on October tenth, it was six point eight hours. So the average is pretty high. We do spend a lot of time on calls. We are very call-heavy. We do run a lot of calls for the size of our agency. As you'll see, as I get into two some more, two some more slides, we'll move here next into the call volume per year.
So if that was a typical day, how come you didn't pick three or four days in a row?
We can do that. We just, I can do that for you. We just picked an average day. Those aren't the busiest days. The busiest days have up to twenty-four calls, so we didn't use those. We kind of tried to pick some.
When you're talking twenty-four calls, they're stretched out between four stations, correct?
Yes, but when you talk about the cleanup time, that's specific to each station. So we have, that'd be an hour, you know, if it's a structure fire, it's not just an hour for one station, it's an hour for each piece of.
Correct, but your typical day you had there that stretched out between four stations, that wasn't just Station One that did all those calls?
Four or three, depending on the, the status of Station Seventeen. Calls, call volume by year. So, and you're going to see a slide after I show you this one, which is important. If we look at the total number of fires, every year, we have an increase. So if you take the total average increase over the five years, we're looking at an eighteen percent increase in our fire calls over the last five years. So I'm going to show you a, a slide, the next slide, it's national trends and it's going to show you the amount of career firefighters and the amount of fire calls. And the fire calls are going down, but it only shows you to 2010. And actually in 2015, between 2014, 2015, there was an increase of three point eight, I believe it was, three point eight percent of fire calls. And in two, between 2014, 2015, we had a fifteen percent increase. So the national trends don't speak for us. We don't follow the national trends. We are way busier when it comes to fire calls than national trends. So we just put this in there just to give you a comparison.
But does the 534 include boundary dropping or is that just strictly our stations?
It includes partially boundary dropping because in 2015, we weren't a hundred percent doing it yet. But if you look, if you want to look between 2012 and 2013, we had a thirty-three percent increase without boundary dropping.
What do you attribute the increase to?
You know, I think a lot of it has to do with demographics. It has to do with the surroundings. We have a lot of, you know, dry grass and vacant buildings. I think a high number of transients. So a lot of those things contribute. You know, fire prevention helps those numbers, you know, and that's part of where we lack for staffing reasons is in our fire prevention. So here's the, here's the slide I was talking about, the national, the trends. So it shows the, the decrease in fires from nineteen eighty-five to 2010, but like I said, there was a slight uptick in 2014 to 2015, which was like three point four percent. And we continue to be way above that. Call volume by station here. So this is a call volume by station, it basically breaks down the call volumes for the year. And we, if you break it down to the station, it's pretty self-explanatory also. Station One, Station Fifteen, which is the downtown station, they run two thousand eighty-six calls a year or thirty-six percent of the call volume. Station Sixteen ran nineteen hundred and forty-eight calls for thirty-three percent of the call volume. Station Seventeen, four hundred and fourteen. Keep in mind, it's not open all the time, so if it was, that number would increase and Fifteens would go down a little bit. Eighteen was thirteen hundred and fifty-eight calls for twenty-four percent. And one thing to take a look at, when you look at sixteen, Station Sixteen's calls, if you break out the out the calls that were just in the industrial fire protection district, out of those 1,948, 824 were in the industrial fire district, and that's a total of 14% of the call volume. So the remaining calls of 1,142 were city of series or other calls, so about 20%.
I got a question. So you have a call, and I'm just looking at average calls per day for the City Hall, right? But that one went, and then it needed to have a backup, so does that count the backup engine that's going as well? Because like when you do pit crew, so is it, is it really 4.7 that day? I'm just using this as an example, saying that day, but you, do you see what I'm saying?
So you're asking me if?
So, so there, there's a call, we get a call, but we have two engines go to the call. Would that?
It's one call. That's one call.
That's one call, but two engines are going?
Yes.
Okay.
So you don't count it as one call for Station 16 and one call for Station 15?
No, it's one call. It's the same incident, it's the same report. If we have a working structure fire, we don't count it for four calls. It's just, it's one call, four pieces of equipment go, or three.
And your call volume here does, does include any mutual aid?
Yes. And I'll get into some of that here in a little bit.
But a question for you, because I'm a little confused. Your chart breaks it down by location, and let's say there's 2,086 were the City Hall station and 1,358 from Fowler. Are you saying that those are incident, separate incidents where only City Hall responder, only Fowler, not both of those?
No. It could have been a single engine response, or it could have been more than one, but it's to the same incident.
So where's the number getting counted? Is it getting counted under?
The primary response is what, the primary apparatus responding is where it's being coded to, but if there's multiple units, it's getting coded one time. So whoever is, the primary response area is where it gets tracked to, and then after that, if there's more support, it's still one incident. So it's only counted once, it just counted in the area of the primary response.
Okay. Thank you.
2016 call volume breakdown. The interesting thing about this slide is the national average for EMS calls is right around 70, 72%. So I wanted to point out that we, although we do do a lot of EMS calls, we are way below the national average and what, and what attributes to that is our fire calls. 534 fires are 9% of our call volume. Normally, in a municipality of, for a city, that number is anywhere from four, maybe at an average of 4%. So we are double that, so that's why our EMS calls are lower. And the rest is, you know, self-explanatory with the MVAs, the recs, and the service calls and the other, the other types of calls. But I just wanted to point out those, because when you look at other agencies, not so much around here, but different cities, especially, you know, go towards the Bay Area, those fire calls can be down 2 and 3% and the medical aids are up to, you know, high 70s.
And then I'm looking at the good intent calls is over 15%. So that's even more than what your, what your fire calls are.
Yeah, and we're thankful for that.
Oh, no, I think, I mean, I think it's a good thing, really, so.
Okay, I'm going to get into some mutual aid, automatic aid information here, so I hope I don't lose you. If I do, just ask me to slow down. So we look at mutual aid given. So this is mutual aid, this is, if we want to say countywide. So we've, we responded 287 times to assist with mutual aid, and 513 of those were automatically built into a call, so a total of 800 times we went mutual aid or automatic aid. So you look at the mutual aid received versus the mutual aid given for a total of 142 times when we received aid countywide. You want to, we break that down from MCST resources, we received 124 times and we went 512 times. That number, just looking at those numbers, look kind of high, or if you want to call it not, no, not equal. But let me just paint a clear picture and make it a little more clear for you, and hopefully you understand it a little bit better. So out of those 512 times, 178 times, we were canceled before we arrived on scene. So basically, we were dispatched, but we weren't needed, so we were canceled. So if you take that 178 times and subtract it from the 512 times, brings that total times down to 334, that we actually arrived on scene and provided assistance. So let's look at how many times we received MCS, MCS resources. It was 124 times. Of those 124 ti, four times, 57 of them were for working structure fires. So as you may or may not be aware, a working structure fire gives us five engines and a quint or truck. And on our best day, we only have three engines and a quint in the city. And it also gives us an extra battalion chief. So depending on whether Station 17 is open or closed, we get anywhere from three to four units from the MCS agencies responding into our city for structure fires. That happened 57 times last year. So when you take the minimum of three units, multiply that by 57, you get 171 units that came into the city to assist us on incidents. When you add that to the 124 times total, it gives you 295 units received, and we gave 334 units. So the difference is less than 1% of our call volume. So just looking at the MCS.
How many times were they called off?
What's that?
Were they called off at all? At 124?
Not for a structure fire.
No, but, I mean.
For other calls, possibly, yes.
As you said, how many on the other ones? So it wasn't necessarily structure that we were going to, that we were called off on? You had that number, right?
Yes, I did.
You don't know what, what that number would be on the 124, though?
I don't have the information, but I can, I can get that.
That's okay, thank you.
So that's all I have for our calls and what we do, and happy day, and I'll hand it over to City Manager Wells. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Nichols, B.C. Gomes. As we move into kind of the next piece, the final third here. The overall structure of the department, this, this chart is outdated as of today. There was shift bid, and so these, the names in the boxes mostly all changed as of today. We were putting this information together last week and didn't get the updated information in there, but the overall structure is the same. Basically, you see the, the three BCs with the four stations, 3O staffing at three of the stations and the 2O staffing at Station 17 or Station 3 on Service Road. So that's the overall structure. As, as indicated previously at council, you know, we currently have a battalion chief that's vacant due to the retirement of B.C. Wheeler, sorry, and one engineer vacancy. Our SAFER levels are full as of today. The number six SAFER employee started today. So we are full on the SAFER, we can have those two vacancies. So just same information, just presented more linearly, showing the, kind of the overall FTEs or full-time equivalents. Again, the six SAFER grant employees are included in that total number. So that's the overall structure as we're funded in current fiscal year's budget. And some of the things that are missing, missing pieces to being fully staffed with the, with the structure that we have in place. Again, our fire chief is, is performing a dual role, basically depending on the day. Part-time in one, part-time the other, it really doesn't work out that way. But full-time fire chief, full-time fire marshal, a dedicated training officer. Right now, the office assistance that is being provided at the Fire Department is split 50% between code enforcement and fire. Dedicated funding for apparatus replacement, the, obviously, council is well aware of this, of the financial challenges that we've been, we've not been able to put money aside for the replacement of our apparatus. And over the past several years, as well as most of the other departments, operational funding has been cut in efforts to balance the budget. And with full staff, staffing at Station 3, at Station 17 or Station 3, would be 3O staffing, would be what is considered full staffing. So as council is well aware, you know, the budgets are, are difficult. Our current costs, based on the fiscal year budget of 16, 17, this includes the Measure H. I don't have the SAFER numbers in there, but just the grand scheme of things, big picture, $6.1 million. Of that, you know, the lion's share of those costs are personnel costs at 5.4 million, you know, that difference being the 700,000. You know, questions come up in terms of, you know, what is it, what does it cost on a per-station basis? It's pretty difficult to get that as a real accurate number, because we don't track it that way. But if you looked at just the kind of utility costs associated with an individual station and some of our internal service funds for facility maintenance, that number, depending on the station, is probably somewhere between 40 and 60,000. But again, it's, it's more related to the personnel and which equipment is in that station that really drives the overall costs. So just to kind of give you magnitude, if council was interested, we could drill into those numbers a little bit more to kind of get that cost, but at this point, just, just know that, you know, the lion's share of the costs associated with fire and most of our services is the same, very similar in PD. It's, it's personnel that drive the bulk of the costs. So as mentioned there, SAFER grant, 1.2 million that we received over two years, that grant will end in March of 2018, so just over a year into that grant. So the cost pressures, here's where the challenge is for us as a city, is, is we're starting to put our budget together for fiscal year 17, 18, just for this year. So the numbers that I show there in the parentheses are, are our draft numbers is, as the budget's been put together by the Finance Department. Workers' compensation increase, this is citywide numbers, general fund only, so not, you know, there's a higher increase here, but just giving you the magnitude in the general fund. $160,000 worker comp, retirement costs are increasing, $375,000. Health insurance and liability insurance, 285,000. SR 911, as was mentioned earlier, our arrangement with SR 911, prior to the West Landing specific plan annexation, our agreement with the county was that we would provide services to those areas in exchange for getting the dispatch services. So that's the, the jail, the county facilities there, as well as G3. With that change, they've since changed the overall structure and how those costs are allocated to the agencies, and so those costs are going up each year. Last year, our cost was, I think, around $10,000. This year, it'll be around $70,000. We're getting an offset from the county as a result of our relationship with Westport that kind of reduces our overall cost. But there is another increase to that cost that will be coming next year as the three-year phase-in of our dispatch costs through SR 911.
So with that, are we increasing our costs for them to, for us to cover their county facilities?
No, because they're incorporated in the city limits. We, because they're in our city limits, we provide service to them, just like anybody else in our city limits.
Yeah, but the jails are county-owned.
But it's still in the city limits.
Facility.
It's in the city limits of the City of Series. When we annexed it, that was the.
And we pay them too.
I commented on that.
And we pay them too.
In what respect?
Well, when we took it over, we had to make sure they were funded when we took, when we annexed that area.
Well, the Westport, again, that's why we get a, we're getting a reduction in our dispatch costs as a result of that annexation. It's basically offsetting the $50,000 that we are giving to Westport. The reduction from the county is offsetting that $50,000.
And I wonder, is that because they increased their, their property owner out there?
No, that was done before. This arrangement was done before they increased.
So maybe we'll get more.
Doubtful. Their property tax increase was just done in the last year, and that did not, our agreement with them is in essence separate from that, because it was a condition of the annexation.
But the jail's in our city limits, right?
Correct.
And we don't get property tax on it, do we?
Do not.
Okay.
So we're looking at $820,000 increase?
For those three pieces.
Or just those three?
Just for those three pieces, correct. That's the general fund impact as it, as it stands today.
On top of what the deficit is?
Well, the deficit all rolls into there. We'll kind of get into that in just, it's just a bit.
That's fine, I didn't mean to jump ahead.
No problem. No, that's, that's kind of the, the challenge that we've got. And last bullet there, lack of, you know, the aging equipment, and as indicated, we have not had the, the funds to dedicate funds for the replacement of our equipment, and we are, as council approved, the approving or pursuing and waiting for, anxiously waiting for hopefully the award of a grant that would provide up to a million dollars for the replacement of one of our pieces of equipment, preferably the quint. So just kind of a breakdown of those numbers, I mentioned that 6.1 million, just kind of saying what's in the general fund. So when we say general fund funding, those other, circling back to the beginning, showing that big picture, you know, we do get some revenue from those areas they were providing service to, Series Fire Protection District, approximately $70,000, Industrial Fire Protection District, 239. Then as part of our community facilities districts, which are mitigations in essence for new development, about $300,000 per year that is allocated towards the Fire Department. And the last piece there, the FIU, Fire Investigations Unit, the reimbursement for us having a captain provide that service to the community is 165,000. So those numbers are rolled up into that 4.5 million. Currently, in that fiscal year budget, 16, 17, it's anticipated 1.5 million from Measure H for that total 6.1 million that we've got included for the current per-budget year that we're in.
Do you have a breakdown of what Industrial Fire Protection District was being over there in PECOS? What it's costing the city compared to what we're getting as far as revenue back from?
No.
Breakdown of what the difference is?
I don't have those numbers, but I can get those for you.
I think it's fair to say 239,000 isn't going to cover, what, did we have 20-some percent of the calls?
Well, 20% of the calls was in the Series, 14% was in the industrial fire district.
Still, it's a big number.
Yeah, that 14% was the 824-ish. Sorry, the, you know, kind of the key pieces that this, this conversation is driving, you know, our, our challenges in the general fund, and this is not just on fire, this is across the board, you know, our general fund deficit continues to grow, our expenditures are outpacing the revenue growth. We're seeing that our, you know, those three main cost drivers are increasing pretty significantly, driving this gap. We're getting further away rather than closer together, and it's a challenge on both the expenditures and the revenues. Revenue's not growing fast enough and expenditure's growing much faster than, than we'd like to see, obviously. So the key takeaway really is, you know, adjusting service levels to match the available funds, which is the challenge that we've been in this budget for the last couple of years. And as I mentioned, it's, it's become.
15, actually.
It's been a while. So where we are in the overall budget and how does this fit into this overall conversation? So the draft budget's in process. I actually started the review with the departments today. We'll be doing that through the rest of this week, rolling that information up over the next two weeks, putting that document together for the council's consideration at a budget workshop here on May 15th, as council directed. This would be a, basically replacing the planning commission for that evening, 4:00 to 9:00 PM would be a pretty comprehensive review of the draft budget. That budget would be scheduled for council approval on June 12th. So the, the big picture here is, in the grand scheme of things, our 16, 17 fiscal year ended better than we expected. We, we expect to hit a, somewhere around a 21% reserve where, when the budget was improved, our expectation is we'd be around 18%. So we got some good news in that respect, that we were relatively close with about $300,000 from being balanced for fiscal year 16, 17, as we're projecting it today. Don't know for sure where we end up, because there's still a couple of months left in the year, but that's the good news, we're ending in a little better situation than we had projected, due to a number of factors. The bad news is, with those costs that I mentioned earlier, the 820,000, as well as a number of other increases, or just, you know, electricity, telephones, those type of increases, we're looking at a gap well over a million dollars and some could be closer to $2 million, so don't know a real solid number of that until I finish my review with the departments and see what adjustments can be made to get that number down, and obviously what the impact and what that looks like to the overall fund balance. Don't have that number yet. We'll have that in the next week to two weeks, and that will be obviously the primary conversation on the May 15th, discussion for the budget. So why are we here? And really, we're here based on this topic of options, of where do we go from here? Because it's, it's pretty clear that we've got a challenge fiscally, trying to find ways to provide the best service possible at the best price possible, and from the city manager perspective, it's uncomfortable, or I'm not willing to go out and talk about some of these options until both the community and the council are aware of what we're doing. And obviously, for us to consider any of these options here, we need council direction before we can do that. So that's really what we're looking for this evening, are these options or any others, you willing for us to, to start the conversations? Because. Because, you know, it's uncomfortable for me to be out in the community having a conversation with, say, the City of Modesto or Stanislaus Consolidated, without our community knowing that we're exploring this option, making sure that we're being as transparent as possible, that we're considering the option to see if there is a more efficient way to deliver fire service that provides the highest level of service we possibly can to our community at the best price that we can. Because, you know, obviously, our, our challenges are, are significant, and we think it's prudent that we be as proactive and as active in this conversation, and so if you're asking for my recommendation, I would recommend we do all three of these items, that we would move forward with a consultant, and there's, there's several consultants out there that can do a detailed analysis, give us an independent, you know, verified look at how we're providing services and if there is a better way to do it so that we've got, you know, that third set of eyes from the eyes that we've got here, looking at it from, you know, from that clear perspective, and again, there's a number of consultants out there who specialize in this type of activity that we think would be, would be worth pursuing that option, and then open the dialogue with those other agencies, City of Modesto, as well as Consolidated, if it both expressed an interest, City of Turlock has also asked the question, is this a conversation? Again, I don't want to go down those road and have those conversations until council is okay with us opening at least the dialogue, whether that leads to fruitful conversations or not, we at least, we feel it's important to have that dialogue and open those, open those doors to see if it's something that those agencies would consider. Again, they've expressed interest, at least for sure, those three, and see if that conversation is maybe a little bigger, you know, obviously, the bigger it gets, the more complicated it gets, but obviously, sharing a boundary with Modesto, we're already in a JPA with Modesto, it's an obvious partner to at least have a conversation with, and the same thing with Consolidated. So, with that, I'm open to any questions and we'll go from there.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Wells. First, I want to thank you and Chief Nichols and Mr. Gomes for the, the presentation and putting this information together for us. It's obviously, it's very apparent that, you know, we've been providing great service and citizens have benefited from that tremendously, and, and I wanted to, you know, it's a tribute to our public safety for us to be providing that service, so I, you know, it, we've been fortunate, I can say. You know, but me personally, when I, when I said fifteen years, it, it, it's been about that long that I've been on this council, and, you know, we've continued to subscribe to the fact that we were hoping that the rainy day would go away and things would get better, and, and so for nearly the fifteen years, in fact, I'm not sure I can remember one year where we did not tap the reserves to, to support our services. Unfortunately, I, I think we now, all those chickens are coming home to roost, and, and I think it's something that where we can no longer continue to operate this way. And when you look at the, the data that was presented, to me, it appears as if the way that services have been provided in the past is no longer the way that things are moving in the future. And so, I, I, my, my opinion is, I, I think we have to address how, not only how we provide services, but what we provide services, because I think, I mean, I can't sit here and say that I can absorb over a million, between a million and two dol, excuse me, a million and two million dollars of deficit spending. The city doesn't have that long, within eighteen to twenty-four months, we would be insolvent, so it's not an option. We have to change the way we continue to provide services, in, in my opinion. So, those are my initial comments, and I'll open it up to any of the other council members before I will open it up to the public, so.
Well, you know, Mr. Wells, I'd like you to, I mean, it's difficult now, but about four slides back, you were talking about replacement costs on equipment. My question is, in the, for the next presentation or whatever you bring back, is there a way that you can get comparable cities with comparable revenue and has a, find out what their plan is for replacement cost of their equipment? See if...
Our, our cost would be, the number, we have the number of what we should be...
No, but I'm talking about what they have in place for replacement cost, you know, I mean...
We should be putting a hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year away, and we should have been doing that for the last twenty years. So, you'd have a, a pool, and you'd have staggered replacements, I mean, we know what we should have in there, which you should have, a pool for the replacement of these vehicles, around two million dollars, so you could replace a piece of equipment every five years, so you stagger the use of those, you know, general idea that, you know, Chief Nichols has, has shown the council at the goal setting, you know, ten, ten years on the front line, you know, ten years of reserves, kind of a target that you would have, if you had enough, you know, for a four-station situation where you were replacing a, a piece of equipment every five years, and that's ideal. Does ideal happen very often? Not really, but that's, that would be the structure that we would have needed to start a long time ago of putting those together, and so you're going to need, you know, a cushion of a couple million dollars in there for the replacement fund to be fully funded, or, you know, hopefully get lucky with some grants to help offset some of that.
And my question is, is there a thing that you can put together that shows comparable cities of what plan, what, what their plan is in place? Do they have the same plan as the city of Series does with no plan at all? Or do they have a plan that takes, you know, what, what they do?
Across the board, I mean, you're going to have...
Well, and that's what I'm saying, there, there might be somebody that we can look, we can look at and say, we need to try to adopt this for future reference.
We're going to ask ten cities, we're going to get ten answers, but, yeah, we, we already know what we should be doing, I mean, that's pretty clear.
But there's other cities that, that are doing it, and how are they doing it? So, what I'm saying is, you know, look outside the box, look outside the box, and, and see what somebody else is doing, okay?
It's a revenue problem, not an expenditure problem.
I, I understand, that's why I said comparable cities. You know, our biggest, our biggest problem right now is we don't have, we don't have the revenue coming in, but we have the revenue going out. We, you know, we, we don't, we don't have that. So, you know, that was, that was one, one, one thing I said, one, one thing I asked. The other thing is, is I'd like to see a breakdown of, of Pecos Station on what we're getting in and what our, what our expenses are going out, for, for mutual aid, for, for everything else, and, and, and see, see what we're, where we're getting a bang for our buck. You know, I mean, we're going to go down to this when, when West Landing is, is open, and, you know, the people over there and the homes are being built, and they're going to want to, they're going to want a station five over there, and it's like, well, wait a minute here, we can't even keep, you know, we can't even literally fund four stations now with three firefighters per station per shift, you know? What are we going to do when there's five? So...
Hopefully, those homes are fire-free.
Okay.
Any other comments? Before I open it up to the public? Okay, at this time, I'll open it up to the public, anyone that would like to speak on this item, please come forth.
Did we need to switch that mic?
I'd rather not stand up here and yell, this works out perfect. Thank you very much for the presentation, I appreciate the time. I, I'd like to first address Councilman Recline, the comments that I've been hearing about the station number two, the industrial station. The way I look at it is, basically, if you were living in a house and you had a tenant living there that was paying a quarter of your, of your mortgage, you'd be all for it. That's exactly what's going on at station two, we call it station sixteen, is someone's paying the bill to have that station. That station is the most efficient station in the city by far, probably in the county by far, because that shared cost, the income we get for the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If we didn't have that industrial station, we would still have to cover north of Hatch. We would still have to have a station or some type of response apparatus to cover north of Hatch, and we'd be on the foot for one hundred percent of that bill. Station two, we get two hundred and fifty, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars to help us provide coverage for that area. It's a huge bang for the buck. So, on, on that, if we, if we kind of take a look at it a little bit different, it, it makes sense, at least in my head.
So, don't you think that that would be part of responsibility of Modesto City to respond over there also?
Well, Modesto City is responding to the other half of the industrial district, they get the other half of the two hundred and forty thousand dollars. It's, their station ten is also a huge bang for the buck, because they're being paid for, they're being paid out of the industrial district as well. But they would still have to cover their Modesto addresses as well, it's one of their most efficient stations, I would assume. And it's also one of our busier stations, you look at some of our outline stations that sit way out in the city limits, we don't run the calls that we do at station two. Even if you took the automatic aid out of the situation, that station two is a busier station because of the demographics, because of the age of the houses, the neighborhoods, half the neighborhoods don't even have sidewalks. I'll tell you right now, nice houses don't burn, poorer areas burn, that's just the way it is, their fire protection systems aren't there, their smoke alarms aren't there, that's just how it works. So, I just kind of want to address that. The second part, unless you have any further questions about that, the second part is, City Manager Wells talked about contract for services. I've talked to several of you about contract for services, I think it is one of the solutions that we need to seriously look at. Right now, I mean, what do we, we, we're looking at June, so we're within sixty days of trying to figure out this budget. I would not want to be sitting up where you guys are, trying to make a decision based on, I think we had twenty-four slides, and whatever other information you get in the next sixty days, and it's probably even less than that, I would not want to sit up there because that's an impossible decision that I think you guys have to make. The decision you're going to make is going to, is, is going to determine the service level for the fire service, and if it goes down the road that I think it's going to go down, you're going to desecrate the fire service in this city. That is going to be on this council's head for a long, long time, would not want to be up there with you guys. So, what I'm proposing is that we slow down, and you buy us a year. We dip into our reserves, we do some cuts where we can, we dip into our reserves to remainder to buy us a year. During that year, we took, we look at a full reorganization of this city, we look at contract for services for us, possibly contract for services for PD, they're probably not going to like that, but we need to look at all options to make costs go down. No matter what service level you give us, I have a strong feeling that it's going to be cheaper if we contracted out. The deficiencies that City Manager Wells talked about, no training officer, no prevention officer, the list goes again and again, if we added those to our current budget, we'd need to, well, we need to add at least another million dollars to get those positions. What Chief, Chief Nichols is trying to do right now, be the fire chief and the prevention chief, is an impossible task. We don't have a prevention department in our, in our city. As much as you like to think we do, our inspections are down, our overall prevention for the city is down because one man is trying to do both jobs. We don't have the budget for prevention, if we contract out for services, those services would come out with a contract, if we contracted with, say, Consolidated. Stanislaus Consolidated would give us a training officer, overhead services, prevention services, inspection services, and you're probably thinking, well, why would they want to do that? What are they going to get out of that for us? It's a shared cost. So, a fire chief is going to be that much cheaper for all the districts that that fire chief is responsible for, because now we enter into the, the contract with them. A contract, it's, it's not a bad thing, it's just a contract, you write a check, just like you write a check to IC refrigeration that comes and does the service for you, you write a check to them. If you don't like the service you're providing, they have to answer that service. If you talk to Oakdale City, Oakdale Rural, who contracts out with Stanislaus Consolidated, if there's a problem with the service delivery they're getting, I guarantee you, the chiefs are going to be right at their front door, talking to them about the service and being responsive to the service, they have to be, or it's not going to work. If Oakdale City pulls out of that contract, it's going to fall apart, and there's a lot of actors and players.
Can I have your wrap-up comments?
Absolutely, absolutely. That's, that's about all I wanted to talk about, was the contract for services. If there's any questions, I'd love to answer them for you, here or after a meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rebecca Harrington, Bystrom Road, I'm in the unincorporated area now known as North Series. First of all, I do want to commend the fire station there at Pecos, they have come around through our neighborhood and have done a lot of great things. I don't know if a lot of you remember the fire from May of last year, which we called the Pedro's Palace Fire, along with the help from the Modesto Fire Station, there was probably about five engines out there, they were there, I'm going to say, better of eighteen hours, which is a lot of time. I know that they make a lot of calls, because, trust me, they run right in front of my house all the time, so we see what happens, and unfortunately, a lot of the calls that they're making are for medical emergencies, not a whole lot of fires. Some of the bigger fires that we have had in the area has, have burned down some of the decrepit buildings along the way. I know personally, myself, I have called in a lot of stuff over to Environmental Resources, the code enforcement, because of some of the places on South Ninth Street, there are a fire waiting to happen. While we do, in our community, do try to do some cleanups, unfortunately, you cannot regulate some of the people who just plain and simply don't give a damn, they don't care what their house looks like. We do, and a lot of my close neighbors, we do care about what's around our property, we do try to take care of them. I would feel it'd be a great travesty to lose that fire department, that fire station there. They have come out and worked with us in the community to do cleanups, they are wonderful men that are doing a great job and who are very committed to the community that they serve. I really hope that you will look into other options of somehow not closing that station because I feel it would be very difficult for us to get a good response time. I mean, as it is, they are there, when we call them, they are there. If we lose that particular fire department in that, that station, we're going to be getting people coming in from Modesto, from downtown Modesto, which has already a high volume of calls, and sometimes, unfortunately, there happens to be roadblocks, because, trust me, when we were coming through when Pedro's Palace was burning, I could not believe the number of people that were luckylose that prohibited the, the actual fire engines coming in to help the industrial fire department there from, on Pecos Station. So, please look at some other options, we don't want to lose one of the only services that we do have with the city of Series. I wasn't here to speak on that, but after listening and talking to Jair back there, I'm very concerned that, that this already depressed area will lose one of the only services, a good service that we do have, because I do commend that fire station, they do do an excellent job, and they do come out to help the community when they're not busy, they make an effort to be connected.
Evening, gentlemen, mayor, thank you for your time. I'm Darlene Haas, I'm just a member of the community, actually, just wanted to get up and speak on behalf of the firefighters of this community. Listening to Mr. Wells and the other fire captains talk about their numbers, I wanted to do some comparative data with the City of Turlock, I did like the contracted suggestion that was made, because in comparison with the City of Turlock's fire department, they average about seventy-two thousand people plus whatever their outlining borders are, they have forty-two line firefighters currently right now, their budget currently is eight point five million, their revenue was one point nine, in addition to other grants that they did not put on their budget. They have four admin staff, and they have four full-time stations with an average response time of five minutes. Our response time is just under five minutes, about four minutes and sixty, four, four point six seconds, four point six minutes, excuse me, and that's with three stations full-time, four not full-time. And from what they said on our slides today, their, their calls are just under five thousand calls, whereas the Turlock was nine thousand calls that they, they do per year, and City of Turlock is larger than City of Series, but I think you guys would be doing a very big disservice to the city of Series if you guys did close that third, that four station and cut their funding. I know it's, I don't envy your guys' job, I work for the Stanislaus County, it is not easy times right now either, I understand that. I do like the idea, and I hope that you guys do consider buying them that year and contracting their services out. Thank you.
I do have a little bit of experience in the fire service. I got to tell you, in Stanislaus County, there's nobody better than what you've got here. But, there are some things that... But, there are some things that all the cities should be thinking about doing. What are there, nine in the county? Nine cities? Think of the power you nine cities would have if you made everything, every engine, every truck, all the same. You could take, let's say, a truck from Modesto comes here, a firefighter could go to that truck and find the same things, the same equipment and everywhere. It's been done all over the United States. It started in Oklahoma, when Oklahoma City Fire and thirty-three cities surrounding them got together and did a JPA. And they walked into Pierce Fire Apparatus and said, "We wanna buy sixty fire engines all the same." Pierce pushed equipment that was halfway done out into the snow so they could work on those sixty fire engines because they were all the same. They built them at a rapid rate of speed. They built those engines, and the, the JPA paid them in cash. Well, at one time, they brought in people to take those engines back to their homes. That was in nineteen eighty-something. What's taken Series and Modesto and Newman and all of those cities so long to find this out? It's, it's really, really a simple thing. You buy the same air, air packs, the breathing apparatus, you buy the same hose, you buy the same gloves, you buy the same turnouts, you buy the same everything. Uniforms. The only thing is, you save money. It's, it's not, but the problem seems to be, that I've seen in California, is kingdom I'm not saying that Chief Nichols is a kingdom builder, he's not. He wants to get the best that he can for what he can get. But there are other departments in the, that don't want to consolidate. They don't want to have a sharing of equipment. They don't want to have a sharing of buying power. But think about it. If you had nine cities in this county, all working at, it, it takes a little while, and it takes some cooperation, but it could work to the point twenty years down the line, there wouldn't be any problems with purchasing equipment because you'd have the, the people coming to you wanting to sell you a fire engine if you made forty of them the same. They'd give you a darn good price. And they'd be cutting each other's throats trying to get your business. Same thing with air packs, same thing with uniforms. Just think about it. A JPA with all nine cities would be amazing. You could get stuff for a lot cheaper than you're doing now individually. Thank you.
Honorable Mayor, Mayor, Council, City Manager Wells, thank you. My name's Brian Rice. I am a field representative for the International Association of Firefighters, the Tenth District that encompasses New Mexico, Arizona, California, Hawaii, and Guam. And in speaking with President Miller and some of the things that the City of Series has faced, and then listening to Chief Gomes' explanation of the things that firefighters did, I spent thirty years in the fire service, the last several actually on the management side of the table. Then I came back to the labor side with the Sacramento firefighters. But one of the things that I picked up, I understood exactly with a few nuances what the chief was talking about, it made sense, it clicked. The gentleman that just spoke, there's actually quite a bit of wisdom in what he said. I worked for an agency that most municipalities, including the one I worked for and the one surrounding, they all had very active equipment repair programs until the economy went south and then all bets are off. And I could, I could name cities, and not proudly, but the organization that I worked for, we had, we called it a five and fifteen. Fifteen years frontline service, five years reserve. And unfortunately, when the economy went south, that kind of ended. But part of the wisdom that he talked about that I really liked, I was sitting at the table when the department bought twenty fire engines and two trucks and eleven medics, the majority of them from Pierce Manufacturing. And the economy scale that you could get on a purchase like that, all of a sudden you went from just a buyer to being someone in the driver's seat. I want to comment on City Manager Wells' options that he listed off. One, I am really glad that I didn't hear any discussions about reducing the staffing on companies from three to two. The men and women that serve Series, even with three, you're at the, you're at the bare minimum. That's what, the department I worked for, we had three on an engine, four on a truck, and your hands are full. I know that giving descriptions, if you don't do it every day, can kind of seem just like a lot of words, and it's one of those ones where you put your hands in it and you do it. And I think you guys have a Fire Ops 101 coming up pretty soon. I would encourage each of you to take the time and do it. It will be the best morning and afternoon you spent to get an understanding of what the men and women do to protect your cities, your city. But looking at the options up there, hiring, hiring a consultant, I've worked with several as a management guy and a labor guy, and there's a couple of really good ones out there, and there's a couple of really, what I would term hack firms. You need to be really careful on, on who you get. I actually was sitting on the management side of the table in the department that I worked for, and I sat in for management on one of the consultants. And one of the, he did two things that struck me that I think were really critically important. If you do that, you make sure that you have representatives from the firefighters local there, because it's gonna do two things for you. It's going to keep all sides honest in what you're talking about, because you're talking about data and numbers and, and all those things. And just like one, one side can't exaggerate what it is, and, and we as labor guys, we can't do that either. We gotta, we gotta shoot straight also. So I would, the smartest thing you can do, make sure labor's at that table and an equal participant with the product that you get, because it's gonna deliver you the best product. And then, the consultant, and he said this, and, and it really struck me, he said, "Brian, a consultant can give you everything strictly by the data and show you what you need to do, just data-based, and it will be wrong." Experience, local knowledge of, of the community you serve, the demographics, that plays a huge part, which leads me to the other two things up there. I would encourage the city, I started a fire department that had three fire stations and forty people, I was number forty-one. By the time I retired, there were over forty fire stations and over six hundred people. And the things that we were allowed to accomplish, not just as a working firefighter, and the benefits that I received with having a broader work area, promotional opportunity, but the things that the department got to do, duplication of services, duplication of officer positions, it was incredible. It, it looks to me like the area in Stanislaus County is primed to begin having discussions about consolidating services. And I know for you as a council, that's hard, because you, you identify, I'll face it, you identify with fire and police. And that, that's a tough discussion, but I think at the end of the day, if you enter, enter into it with no blinders on and no preconceived notions, you may find that your strength is right there and that you will be able to deliver the best service for the community and that we, that they protect. And that is what it is all about, giving emergency lifesaving services to the community. So, and I congratulate you for your increase on your reserve fund. That's, that's good news.
Thank you.
And the second part.
Can I have you wrap up your comments? You've gone beyond the five minutes.
I would strongly consider, I hate to do the pay it forward, but you, it looks like you have some reserve funds that give you the ability to buy some time to really look at what you need to do and not make a knee-jerk reaction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Frank Lima. I'm the Vice President of the International Association of Firefighters and served the Tenth District, representing the entire southwest United States. I'm currently an active fire captain, ladder truck in the city of Los Angeles for twenty-five years. And, you know, we're talking about, we're here tonight in Series, and thank you for welcoming it up to us tonight. And hearing about the budget, I can't help but think of a politician that really means a lot to me, and it's Joe Biden. And he would used to say, "Show me your budget, and then I'll show you your priorities." I think that's a lot what's going on here tonight. Not, I don't wanna be redundant, but all of these things, you know, have firefighters' union involved at the table on the front end. International could help you with the tremendous amount of resources that you wouldn't have to spend doing otherwise. These firefighters, one mentioned that they gave ten, ten percent of their paychecks back a long time ago, and recently got it back, and that shouldn't even be called a raise. They've given so much to this community, and you've probably at some time in your lives, everyone in this room, been positively, you know, affected by them. As far as staffing, if you talk on a national standard, I also sit on the NFPA seventeen-ten, which talks about proper staffing levels and proper time getting to an emergency. And staffing of three is truly still an unsafe staffing level. So, please don't even talk about entertaining talks about going below that, which haven't tonight. And as far as Station Seventeen with the Safer Grant, I mean, it is what it is, the Safer Grants expire, you can't run it, it looks like that's gonna be closing. The problem that I have is hearing that on Pecos, Station Sixteen is, is even in a conversation of being closed, and that's being driven by City Manager Wells, who doesn't even live in the City of Series. I guarantee you, if he lived up off of Pecos, Station Sixteen wouldn't even be on the chopping block. Now, as far as their budget reserves, did a little homework, you, in the City of Series, there's not a minimum that you shall keep in the budget. And to have an eighteen percent, and, and the city manager mentioned up to twenty-one percent is very impressive, shows the fiscal fiduciary responsibility that this council has done. However, what is that for? There are times you save, and you save, and you save, and you guys did, to reach in your pocket because you have an obligation to keep the citizens of Series safe. So, I'd just like to end with the fact that, you know, please keep the firefighters' union involved at all steps of the level, and thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the council on this? No? Okay.
Good evening, Sean Aaron Bergham, this is President of Stanislaus Consolidated, Firefighters Local Thirty-three Ninety-nine. Consolidated Fire obviously borders the area of Series, and I just wanna talk to you two things specifically. As was mentioned earlier, there's a Fire Ops 101 program that we're trying to just give you guys some education over how resource sharing works, how our boundary drops are providing a great quality of service. And I know when you look at stats and you see numbers of, you know, outgoing resources and incoming resources, and it looks like there's a disparity, what we'd like to highlight with that Fire Ops program is show you what that benefit is. And even though there may be some disparities on certain calls, there's a benefit given to everybody, which is safety, because ultimately, the City of Series, while they have three-person staffing or sometimes two-person staffing, they have the responsibility of the safety of the citizens and the firefighters. And when we have this working together of all these agencies together, we help provide that level of safety for everybody. So again, please take that time, I, I'm pretty sure you guys have all been given those invitations. Reach out and please try to attend that event. That's gonna give you a lot of information and help you guys get a better understanding of what we do and how we do it. Secondly, as an agency who has had two agencies contract with our department, Oakdale City and Oakdale Rule, I can tell you that the functionality and the way that those two departments have integrated with our agency and the savings that those agencies have received have been immense with providing good quality service to those citizens. We've been able to reach out for Safer Grants to help extend services to them. We've been able to provide staffing levels that have maintained people's jobs, and that's ultimately what our local is responsible for, is providing the safety of our family and our membership, but also providing it for the citizens. And if ultimately you're cutting staffing, you're gonna be putting the citizens at risk. And so I'm more than happy to address any of those concerns you guys would have with the Fire Ops, or anything that we can do to help ease those concerns over contracting and how it's gonna potentially benefit, whether it be with Consolidated, Turlock, Modesto. I think it's a great idea. Reach out to as many people as possible, because then you get that best true, you know, just like when you're shopping for a car, you don't go to one place and get one bid, you wanna go ahead and reach out and find out what you can get. Reach out to everybody, and maybe you'll find out that we can provide something together individually, but I think ultimately it's gonna serve the City of Series the best by doing that, rather than just, you know, start shutting stations out, because you're gonna put people and individually the citizens at risk. Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Robert Beckhart. Full disclosure, I used to work for the City of Series from nineteen ninety-three to two thousand. Currently, I work for the City of Stockton, I've been there for about seventeen years. I have the dubious distinction of going through bankruptcy with the city, so I know how painful that is all the way around, and I know that you guys aren't talking about that, but it is something that you probably wanna have in the back of your mind. I'm not gonna solve any of your problems tonight, but what I would like to say is, some of you guys live north of Hatch Road. Why don't, if you guys, when you guys go home tonight, just get on Google Maps and just Google, Google map the fire stations and see how long it would take them to get to your house if Station Two was to not be available anymore, or Station Four, or whatever you guys decide to do moving forward. The other part I would like to say, because I think everybody's already covered a lot of it, is a lot of these guys that are out here, they're your softball coaches, they're your football coaches, they're your baseball coaches in your schools. You're not just affecting, you know, just your own little, your own little kingdom, what you're affecting everybody around. These guys are gonna end up, if you guys end up cutting them, end up going to different departments, you're gonna lose a lot of people that are, a lot of these guys have worked here, I've worked with some of these guys when I was here, so they've put a lot of time into this community. And I know that you guys have your, your best intentions at heart, I know, I know that you guys are here for the right reason. Many of you guys serve in the community as well. I just, it seems like it's the same thing all up and down the state. Police and fire are the first to be looked at, the first to be cut. I just, I, I agree with the consolidation idea, I think it's something that's worth looking at. You know, I, I think that three people on the engine, I know you guys didn't talk about reducing that, but it's a bare minimum. I don't really have a whole lot more to say. I mean, I see some of you guys around town, so I'm more than happy to talk to you guys, I just wanna show my support for the fire department, and thank you for your time.
Anyone else? Okay, I'll close the public here and bring it back to council. Just a couple of comments I wanna make. First of all, I, I couldn't agree more with all of you, and, and I think speaking for my colleagues up here, we, we understand a hundred and ten percent what you mean to this community and how important it is, and that's why it's really difficult for us to sit up here knowing that we're stating, we're, we're looking at a million to two million dollar deficit, and there aren't no other strings to be pulled, there are no other things to be done to, because we've been trying to do that for the last ten years. And so it, it's, it's not about whether we wanna get rid of services and how we're going to lose out on that. We, we fully understand, we understand what that impact is. But we also have a fiscal responsibility to not have the city go bankrupt either. And Mr. Wells can correct me if I'm wrong, but given the reserve given the reserves that we have, much like our cities around us, I, I go to dinner with all the mayors once a month. We're not the only ones in this situation. The city of Modesto is not far behind. And, uh, we have, we may have 18 to 24 months if we dip into the reserves. Uh, and then it affects everyone. And so this is not an easy decision for us. It's not anything that we like to do. But we also don't want to be looking at bankruptcy either. And, uh, the question about the reserves, when I joined the council, we were nearly 46 to 50% reserves. We've dipped into it every year for 15 years. Pretty soon eventually, we were hoping that, um, the new businesses would come to town and that revenues would increase. It just has not materialized. And for the comments about Turlock, um, I understand that, but they also have a giant retail anchor that unfortunately we, we do not have. Uh, I wish all of you would have been here when the Super Walmart project was here and there was tremendous amount of money that was coming and everybody wanted to oppose it because that is revenue that the city would see to help us through our situation, so. So, so my, this is very difficult for me. It's not one that, um, I take very lightly, but it's also one where, um, I don't want to go bankrupt on my watch. So, uh, at this time, I'll open it up to any other council comments or direction?
Well, I'll make a comment. There isn't one person up here on the city council that wasn't in high school and beyond when this city was nothing but volunteers. We had one paid firefighter. We've watched this thing grow, the station, the, the city grow from, from one small station to four stations. We've seen, uh, industrial being disbanded and, and consolidated with Modesto and, and Series and, and we've seen tremendous growth in this city. You know, we were doing a general plan update. And, you know, one of the things that I did point out to, to Mr. Westbrook was the amount of growth that was in this city between the years that I graduated from high school and the years my oldest daughter graduated from high school. And there was a 70% increase in, in people. But there wasn't a 70% increase in revenue because we don't have the retail base for it. And these are the things that, that, that we're striving to, to correct. We're trying to get, you know, uh, the Super Walmart in here, that built up, the interchange at Service and Mitchell, um, you know, they just pay it past a major L, which is the transportation, the road tax and, uh, uh, the tax to help out our roads. And some of that funding is, is coming our way through STANCOG to alleviate some of the problems with the interchange and, and to, to get the flow of traffic and hopefully have something built out there. So, you know, our biggest problem is, and since I've been on the council for five years, is, is our revenue source. That's what's killing us. You know, we, you know, it was an open dialogue and I, you know, yeah, we did pick on, on the station at Pecos and, and talked, talk about how many calls it is and everything. But not once did we say we're going to close Pecos. You know, we didn't say we were going to close Pecos. We didn't make an open comment that we were going to go to two-man, two-man staffing or anything like that. We're here to, to look at options and see what direction we're going and, and that's what we're here. You know, and if we don't have this open dialogue, you know, we're just going to keep on going down the same path. You know, as, as the mayor said, you know, uh, they've, they've had a, a reserve of, you know, 46, 48%. When I got on this council, it was down to 26%. And, and, and currently we give a direction to the, to the city manager that we don't want to go below 17%. And, you know, I'll make this open comment because it was part of the thing. It was just previously about, I believe, two or two months ago, maybe three months ago, that because of the revenue that comes into this city that's, that's, that comes from the federal government or the state, they were behind on getting our check. We had to borrow money from the water.
Enterprise.
Enterprise funds to pay our bills because of where our reserves were. And then two days later, the check comes into the state. We had to pay, pay the enterprise funds back. And we don't want to be in that position. Because if you keep on doing that, that's, that's the first thing to go bankrupt. You know, as, as a lot of people know, I'm a salesman and I go up and down this state and I know the, the situation that Stockton's going through. I, I know the situation that a lot of other cities are going through. And, you know, we're not alone. I mean, everybody's fighting for firefight, well, not for firefighters, everybody's fighting for police officers. But you turn around and you look at one of the, one of the largest cities in the area, Sacramento, they can't keep police officers. They're going to, police officers are going to Rockland and they're going over to, uh, Fremont, not Fremont, over by, um, Sioux Sand City because they have the retail base that they can pay their, their police officers. And Sacramento can't keep them. Same thing with city of Lodi. You know, so every city's struggling. But I am very happy that a lot of you showed up. It's very pleased that there's open dialogue and there can be discussion because that gives us a little help and a little guidance of what direction we want to go. Without that, we're just five people making a decision for the best of the community with no input. So I really want to commend all of you people that came up here and I wrote most of your names down. And I want to commend you and thank you personally for coming in here, expressing your opinion and giving us some sign of direction that we can talk amongst ourselves and what we want to do. So with that, I thank you.
Councilmember Drossit?
Yeah, this could be a long night. I'd like to thank everybody else for coming too. Toby and, uh, Mr. Nichols and Mr. Gomes in regards to the report. Very simple for me to follow, which is good. I didn't write your name down, but the gentleman that, that sat here spoke, the Stockton firefighter stated that, you know, police and fire is the first that, that goes. It's cut, well, that's 88% of our budget. So, I mean, it's, and I know you understand that, you've been in the game a long time. And, you know, I mean, if we could find set that tree in the backyard that had all the money on it, we'd just take it out and, and we'd go ahead and use it. There's some issues I have. Number one, I think that, uh, all three options I like in regards to, um, but I don't, didn't really like the consultant because I don't know why we'd have to hire a consultant if people are already gone to the consolidation or they've already gone and done certain things. I'm not necessarily for, and I'm just throw this out there for the Modesto thing because just seeing what's happened in Modesto and talking to a few of their council members, it doesn't look like it's going well, but the resource sharing and the savings of money would, would be awesome. You look at the, the station number two, we never said that that was going to be a station that would be closed. I don't like how many times we jump ship and we support the, the others and it doesn't come back in return. And the numbers, uh, obviously are staggering. We're probably spending $300,000 or $400,000. Then you look at the EMT calls, you know, a lot of our calls are EMT. You know, I mean, is there a better way to be able to service those individuals when there's a medical situation, rather than taking the big truck out and driving it over there and wear and tear and, and then, you know, I mean, it's just, it's just one of those things that, that we obviously don't have a grip on. And we're losing time. I mean, that's something that we're definitely losing time on. You know, there's the 4.51 response time for 2016. Four minutes, 51 seconds is greater than what the response time was in, in Turlock. And Turlock has four stations. And just to say it, we'll, we'll just get there. And I might not make some people happy after the next comment, but they have four stations, they have 70,000 people. We have four stations and we have 47,000 people or whatever that number is. The pit crew, one person does the CPR and the next person has to come and you've got to have two units there. And I know that you don't want to hear this, but we're in a situation where we have a safer grant right now and we do have three-person fire engines. I get that, right? But would it be better to have, and I'm just going to throw a number out there, two stations with three people on it or three stations with two people on it? Regardless, when there's a situation, there may be two fire trucks. I'm not saying that that's the plan, I'm not saying that that's my method. But we're looking at almost a $2 million deficit that if we can't get a grip on this thing, we're in deep, we're in deep trouble. How fast can the consolidated go? How fast could, and would they be even willing to accept us into their realm? I mean, that's something that I haven't had dialogue with. I know, I appreciated talking with you, Mr. Miller, in regards to, you know, information that, that is actually out there. We're in a situation and I thought at some point in time it was going to get better and it hasn't. And when you look at our retail area over there off the freeway, that's probably 2019 by the time some of that stuff gets developed. And we have leakage money that's going bye-bye. The, we're, we're going to have to act and we're going to have to act fast. What that is, I don't necessarily know. But at the same time too, I understand and I appreciate the fire guys. I mean, a lot of you guys I've met and been on the council since 2007, 2008 and I totally respect all of you guys and, and you guys work hard, I get it. And you guys, as Mr. Miller stated, you guys are waiting for the bad to happen. And, and that's understandable. Because, you know, when we have 12 firefighters on duty at one night, if nothing bad happens, well, they, we still have to have them there. And so that's completely understood. Uh, I'd like to hear what some of our colleagues up here have to say.
Councilmember Rhino?
Toby, do we have any analysts on staff that could do an analysis rather than hire a consultant?
Well, we have, we have a couple of analysts. Do they have, uh, capacity at the current time? No, um, we are pretty thin.
Well, we, we always hear how thin we are. Could they be given the assignment by the city manager to do?
To do this type of analysis, I would not feel comfortable with the complexity of this analysis of what we would get, um, that it could be done internally.
Okay. Generally, I do not like consultants. I think they're a waste of money because in our case, we already are having, um, a budget deficit, so why do we want to spend money when we really don't have it? But given that, I think the delivery of fire services is definitely more than any of us really should be comfortable making a decision on. I think it's a really, really big deal. And with that, I would look, I would just be interested to see what a consultant would charge and give us what our options would be. Because I think whatever decision we make, I want to be sure that we've looked at all possible avenues because it's going to affect a lot of people. It's going to affect people for many years when some of us might be in rest homes. Not like you young people, but I, I mean, it's a really important thing. And again, generally I'm against the consultant. I don't like contract services, but I think the importance of all of this, I think we need to explore all those avenues. But I wouldn't just willingly throw money at a consultant. I'd like to know how much it would be and what they're going to give us for that.
Okay. Councilmember Lane?
Yeah, first of all, good presentation. I appreciate, uh, Chief Nichols and Gomes, um, for what you guys did and Toby. It was easy to understand. I won't be redundant here. We have a problem. We know we have a problem. I have been an advocate of fire and police as long as I've sat up here and it's been many years. We got to fix the problem. How we fix the problem, I don't think any of us up here know. And that's why I would recommend on, on all of these things that you have here to go out and, and find some, you know, give us some numbers. And I would, and I would encourage, um, Miller to be in it too, to, to be a part of it. I, you know, I, I think it's transparency, there's nothing here to hide. We got to fix it, so I'd encourage you to be a part of this. And I think, I think Toby would be okay with that too, right? So, you know, and, you know, you haven't got on here fire station closures. None of that's on here. Maybe the consultant's going to look at those things. If not, I would like for us to look at those things and see what, if there's any cost savings there. Again, with, with, uh, the fire department and, and Miller being a part of those discussions too, I think it's important. So with that said, it's just unfortunate times. And we have sat up here thinking it's going to get better, it's going to get better. And it hasn't. We know that our retirement costs are going up. We know our insurance costs are going up. Many things are going up and revenues aren't. So, we got to fix it. So, that would be my suggestion to look at all three of these options and move forward from there.
Just, just to summarize, so just that everyone is aware, I mean, I can, I can support a consultant, but the timeline is probably going to be 30 days to get a consultant onboard by the time we advertise. Perhaps it's shorter than that. It's going to be at least 30 to 60 days if all things go well for them to do their analysis. So we're probably at least at the earliest three months out, probably more like three to six months out. And the only way I could support a consultant is if they analyze both current and proposed delivery methods with anticipated savings. Because at the end of the day, we have to make a change. So whatever those recommended options are, they have to have specific changes. It can't be that we come back and we banter back and forth to keep all the services if we're not going to save any funding. Because we are looking at a seven-figure number and, and that's a, that's a big deal. It's a big deal. And, um, I, you know, I, I wish we would have been to this point a, a little sooner, but, but the reality is, is if we do this, we're making the determination that we are going to dip into the reserves again because we will not have anything in place in, within six months. That's just the way that it works with consultants.
Well, are you comfortable making your, your decision of what you want to do? Without, without a consultant?
I'm willing to look at some options, sure, discuss them, sure. But I'm probably the only one up here, so.
No, I, I, I want someone to look at everything and I don't know that, I mean, Mr. Miller talked to me and everything looked really good if we, if we contracted out. But yet again, I think the city needs to reach out and see what the actual savings would be. So, what you're saying is we aren't necessarily going to get that from a consultant soon enough to deal with our budget issues come July 1st.
Well, I mean, I, I guess it's.
I'm not even saying that I would want to spend the money for a consultant. I would just be curious to see how much it would be.
Sure.
Because we're already in the hole, so do we want to add $50,000 more to that hole? I don't think so.
Well, I, I would, I would suspect it will be in that range because again, I would think to have a valued report, you're going to want them to engage in discussions with potential options that they're going to present. Because it doesn't do them any good to present us with an option that isn't obtainable.
Well, consultants usually do that.
Okay, then what good is the report? So, I, I guess what I'm saying, I can support it, but you have to, we have to give very, very specific, uh, tangible outcomes that we want and from that consultant report. And it can't just be throw us some ideas. They have to be fully vetted because the reaction, the reality is we have to act. And so it has to be something that isn't a report that we put on the shelf and say, "That was a great report, they looked at it, they said if you did this and this, you could potentially save X." It has to be, "If you do this and this, you are going to save that amount of money and here's how you implement it."
So, option two to explore the contract for service with other agencies, how, how, who would do that on staff? Would that be the city manager? Who would contact the other agencies?
Good question, I don't know.
Because I mean, it's out there, but where are we going to get the figures?
Yeah, I, it, it's something that, that someone's going to have to do. Just like, and it's not on this list here and I know, again, my colleagues haven't brought this up here. But as I sit here, an option has to be if we go from a reduction in, in stations. I don't, I, I, first of all, I, I couldn't support anything less than three-person crews for me. And I, and quite frankly, I don't care if it's four, if that's what's safer. But I don't know that we personally can continue to have the same number of stations that we have today.
Councilmember Drossit?
Well, just when you look at it and you look at, uh, station number three out there, I mean, it has one point something calls a day. I mean, it almost seems like, and I understand that we have the safer grant and so right now we have four stations, everything else. You know, but it's like, everybody tries to recreate the will, right? So, we're going to hire a consultant and, and I get it, if that's to get the best blueprint that we have, great. But how did Oakdale go to consolidated? What were the steps? Did they hire some, I know Mr. Miller's raising his hand. Can we let him say something, Mr. Mayor?
Um, let's go through our comments and then we'll.
You know, so, I mean, it's almost like, I, I see it's almost, okay, my house is too much to rent, so I'm going to go look for another house. Oh, it's a cheaper house, it has a pool. Bad analogy, but at the very end of the day, these, we don't have a, we won't have a fire chief, we won't be paying for it, we'll be sharing. So there's hundreds of thousands of dollars, I know meeting with, uh, Captain Miller, that, that, that's there. But at the same time, I mean, I, I would say, hey, listen, no offense Toby, great job, 21% reserves. Maybe, maybe we give them half a year instead of a full year. I know that you stated you needed a full year. Maybe we have a half a year. And half a year, whatever the timeframe is for the day until the half a year is up, if we haven't figured this out, then. we haven't figured this out, then, then change is coming.
Well, I don't know that we can even say half of a year because we don't know what our projected budget is going to be until May, whatever that date is.
Right, but it's, it's twenty-one percent in, in reserves is what we believe we're going to have from whatever that budget is. Obviously, the incurred costs. But, I mean, and I'm not saying I want to take a gamble here, but I'm saying that for some reason, you know, they seem like they want consolidated, to go to consolidated. They think that there's a cost savings factor. They think maybe they can keep three-person fire engines, you know, and again, these are, this is stuff that we've got to come across, but anyway.
Well, again, the bottom line is, who's going to explore the contract with the other agencies? Is that going to be the city manager?
That would be the idea, correct. Obviously, with, with input and support from the fire department, for sure. Yeah, so that, the idea of the three options here would be to get those, get proposed costs, be able to present those at the budget workshop on the fifteenth, so we can have at least a pretty decent number by that workshop of what it would cost for a consultant. Open the conversations with those other departments to see what their interest level is, kind of see where it's at, because I do see those going hand in hand, those conversations with those other entities related to the consultant. Once those conversations are open, then obviously the, the consultant is going to consider that option as well. And so we're, in essence, running down parallel paths so that we can get the best information as fast as possible, so that, again, we can present the council with, you know, really good data to make an educated and informed decision on what's the best way to provide the best service possible for the best price. It's what we owe to our community.
And how long do you think it would take to go the consultant route?
Well, I think we need to get what the dollar amount would be initially, how much it would even be if we would consider it.
Correct. I, I think the first piece is the, the dollar amount. Looking at other agencies that have gone down this route, this, this route, sorry, you know, it's probably is a six-month timeframe.
And, you know, we could give direction. I mean, when, when I think of service delivery, again, I go back to the slide here and I, in my earlier comment about the way that we provide service. And I don't, I can't blame anybody here, it's just, that's the way we're set up. But we're set up for, you know, fifteen percent fire calls and more EMS, eighty-five percent? Is that what I saw on the chart?
No, our, our current numbers are ten, ten percent fire.
Fifteen percent fire, fifteen percent.
Ten percent fire, sixty, sixty-ish percent for EMS.
Okay, good intent. So are we set up to handle what we're dealing with the most efficiently? That would be the question that I would have. Kind of like having nine pitchers on the baseball team. They might all be athletes, but maybe that isn't the best use of that. And, and just a question, I, I don't know the answer to that. And, and, but I would want the consultant to say, okay, at the end of the day, here's a few recommendations that are going to save you the seven figures that you need.
And you want to ensure that we're looking at different service delivery methods as part of that options? That it's not just doing it the same way that we're doing it?
Right.
Am I capturing that correctly?
Yes. And this is probably going to be along the lines of Councilmember Drossit, unpopular comment, but if we're now not going into structures because it's a goods issue, if we're there a minute later, or two minutes, or three minutes, again, I, I don't want it to be that way, but I want to live in Hearst Castle too, but I can't afford it. So, you know-
Again, that, that's where a consultant who specializes in this will be able to provide you that information and be able to show you the, the relationship between service levels, response times, and what those impacts are, so that you're not guessing, right? The, the goal of a consultant of that nature is being able to put that information in a, in a report to be able to, so if, if this, then this, and be able to show that, the, the relationship between what, what service level can you provide and, and have all of those pieces for consideration. So, again, you're making a decision based on, you know, the best information available. You know, how does that change the response time? How it's either, you know, offensively attacked or defensively attacked? All of that information will be included.
It sounds like a pretty detailed report.
Absolutely.
Yeah, how much would it cost us to even get to the point to request information from a consultant?
No cost. Just, just time.
Again, I, I don't necessarily like the idea of a consultant, but I would like to see how much it would cost, just as another option.
That's a, I mean, that's probably a phone call conversation to be able to get a magnitude issue and then put a scope together and, you know, potentially a, a real quick RFP. But we could get numbers, I think, relatively quickly. My, my hope would be able to have a pretty good, at least a budget estimate by our May fifteenth meeting of what that cost would be for a consultant.
But I think I'm the only one who's interested in that, so.
Vice Mayor Klein?
Yeah, but you know, you know, if we're, if we're talking about going down a consultant path, you know, I was, we did a consultant when I first got on the city council, and I was very displeased with the report because it, it gave you a handful of things of what you do, but it didn't give you no direction to get there.
Yeah.
And, and I was very upset because, you know, I, I'd love to sit here and have more, more than one open dialogue with the consultant and say, okay, these are what we're looking at. Because to me, I want to look at, Oakdale went with consolidated. I wanted to see, I, I want to see the comparison of, of, of services that Oakdale provided, then the change of service that was provided to Oakdale when it went to consolidated. I would like to see what the reason was for the, for the, for the fallout of Stanislaus, I believe it was Stanislaus consolidated with Salida and, and that, so, you know-
You're referring to Murfa, right?
Pardon?
Murfa.
Right. I mean, you know, they, they all, they all formed a, a, a JPA and, and they did their thing, and all of a sudden, what is it, four or five years later, they had a big fallout? And, 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 and so, you know, what was the service level before, before they did that? What is it when it was there? And then what was the reason for the fallout? I mean, there's a lot of things that, that encompass this whole thing for us to make a decision.
So we really don't need a consultant to do that? I mean, whoever's going to, if Toby's the one who is going to contact the other agencies to do the numbers, that could be part of his instruction, right? Or would you be paying a consultant to do that?
That's, I'm looking for council direction, which way you'd like me to go. My, my recommendation is to pursue all three of those efforts simultaneously and bring you back information on May fifteenth. But if you would like me to do something different, that's what I'm looking for.
You know, to ask you to do something and, and you make the wrong decision, that's going to be on us. But if somebody else does it, and, you know, with open dialogue and with transparency, I see a consultant being a good thing. I don't like paying for them either, and I think it needs to be specific on, on what we're looking for to make a recommendation. I don't think it'll be, I don't think it should be, you know, well, you could do this, you could do this. I think it should be narrowed down to show us a six or seven-figure savings and how we're going to get there.
And it's a scope issue, right? I mean, it's a matter of drafting the scope of what our expectations are of the deliverables to ensure that, you know, the, the consultant has clear direction as to what they're providing. And that's, you know, that's a scoping challenge, and if the council wants to be involved in that process of writing the scope, obviously, we can-
I mean, you would probably feel much better, wouldn't you?
From a comfort level, absolutely.
I would think so.
Yeah, I mean, I, I want the best information possible.
Right.
And, you know, I'm, I'm suggesting that because I, I feel that strongly that, you know, we can get good information so that you, as a council, feel that you've got all of the data. You know, we, we hit the highlights here tonight, right? I mean, this is really the first conversation of giving you an overview, and there's, you know, a whole lot more to this conversation of how we deliver fire service today that, you know, is really, you know, better captured by somebody who really specializes in this.
Well, are we, are we spinning our wheels and do we even know if consolidated or Modesto wants to work into a?
They've expressed interest, yes.
Pardon?
They have expressed interest, yes, in opening the conversation.
They've expressed it to you, but, I mean, I would like to, I would really like to see them express it to, to us.
In writing?
In writing, yeah.
You need it from them in writing for us to have the conversations in more detail?
No, that, knowing that they're-
They would be interested. I think what he's saying, that they would be interested.
That they'd be interested. I mean, are we, you know, we do all this work, we hire a consultant, we do all this other stuff, and consulting comes back and say, you know what, the figures don't work for us, we're not interested.
Yeah, I mean, they're-
We've seen the letter.
I mean, that's fine.
Shows their interest.
Whatever you need.
Because they would have to supply us with figures of what, what they're expecting out of this whole thing.
Correct. I mean, it's a real simple conversation. I go have a conversation, they say, yes, we're interested, we'll put some numbers together. No, we're not interested. I, I think I can have that answer within a week.
How soon do you think you could meet with maybe two consultants and draft up a scope of work and bring it back to the council for us? Because I think I would like to go through that scope of work so that I make sure that at the end of the day, the questions that I have and want to see get answered?
And I would suspect probably by the end of next week. Obviously, it's a pretty high priority. This week is pretty much all budget. And then next week, we should be able to have something together, and at least have some conversations with a couple of consultants.
So you think you could have something back to us by our next meeting in two weeks, or?
I think that would be a stretch based on what we need to do with the budget, but I, I'm confident I can have something by that fifteenth budget workshop.
All right. Does that work?
That's a start.
Again, it all depends on how much the consultant is going to be.
Well, I can guarantee it's going to be more than ten grand.
Yes, it's in a magnitude, Councilmember-
I wouldn't touch it for anything less than fifty.
It's in the-
I would think it's going to be fifty or sixty thousand.
Yeah, it's in that range. Obviously, we'll, we'll need to speak to consultants for our specific, but other cities have seen dollar amounts in that range, fifty to sixty thousand dollars for something of this nature.
Well, probably if it was that amount, I wouldn't be interested. But again, I want to leave everything out on the table and look at what our options are.
Okay, do I have someone who wants to make a motion for?
We have to.
It's, it's a discussion item, so it's not, you don't have to have a motion, but if you want to do a motion, you can. I just, I need, I need three of you to give me direction.
Well, yeah, I'd like to hear at least if three, do you, you want to go the consultant direction under the timeline of by the fifteenth, he'd come back to us with a scope and a fee?
Can I say something else?
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure.
You know, I mean, it, it's kind of like, this is what it costs to do business, so we have this big amount of money that we're missing, right? That, that we don't have. And so, and I know I did talk with Captain Miller in regards to, do you have an ide, do you have, come up for a second, please. Do you have an idea of what the savings would be just from administrative costs? I know that we had this conversation.
It's, it's very difficult to say. There's a lot of stuff built into the numbers. I know originally I had quoted that it'd be about a one-point-eight million per station. I think honestly, we're a three-station apartment, about five-point-four million dollars. Our current budget's about six-point-one. I, I honestly don't have a whole lot of faith in those numbers. They're ballpark. I got them off of the Oakdale City, Oakdale Rural Contract that they did with Stanislaus Consolidated. There's people in the room that can give a lot more information about contract for services than I can. I've just got it from what I read from the Oakdale contracts. I'm sure there's a lot of other stuff that I haven't looked into, but the, the bottom line is, it, it's going to take, it's going to take time. It's going to take more than thirty days. Even if you did a consultant, I don't think we're going to be able to get it done before the next budget year begins. And, I mean, if that's not going to happen, you're going to devastate our service delivery capabilities, or we're going to tie into the, the reserve fund. With some creative, I, I believe with some creative funding or creative budgeting within the fire department, I think we could save another three or four hundred thousand dollars without really affecting service level to get us by. I mean, that dips into the deficit a little bit. It's not seven figures, but it's a start. If there's other departments that can take a, a, a short-term hit to give us time, and I said, it's, it's not just for our contract for services. If we go out and we do a contract for services, particularly with Stanislaus Consolidated, we take our internal, internal services with us. We, we contract out for IT services. We go through ad tech computers. It's a fraction of the cost that we use for IT here. It would be an impact, larger impact to the city, but if we leave and that service isn't needed in those internal service funds, can they be reduced? We need that year, this next budget year, to reevaluate all of our services across the city from PD to recreation, to all of our internal services. We can't do it in, in two months. It, it would be irresponsible, just as irresponsible as you guys want to dip into the reserves. It's equally irresponsible, but it's going to be devastating to the services in the city. People are going to get hurt and, and damage is going to occur to buildings that don't need to occur.
But the reality is, we haven't been two months. It's been fifteen years.
It has been fifteen years, Mayor, but, but over this last year, I know direction was given this last year, that we would take this list, this budget year and reevaluate our services. But here we are, thirty to sixty days away from deadline, and we didn't fully reevaluate our services. Maybe there's some behind-the-scenes stuff that I haven't seen, and for that, I apologize for that comment, but what, what did we get out of it? We got another year where we're dipping into our reserves. It has been fifteen years, but it's been fifteen years of where have we gone?
I, I couldn't agree with you more, and that's why, over that period of time, you know, we've talked about overtime cutting and how do we, and, and we, we did some great things to save some money over the last two or three years, but everything keeps leapfrogging and going, getting higher and higher, and the retirement costs keep going up and, and everything. And so, you know, I, 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 I hear you, and, and, and even if we saved six hundred thousand dollars, which would be a Herculean event, that's only a portion of what we need to get. And, and so, again, we keep, the, the, if we had no reserves, and we're, we're headed that way, real quick, we wouldn't be having a discussion about what service level we could have. We would be saying, the city's going bankrupt, and we won't have to worry about any of the services because we can't provide them. So, it, the, again, I say, the day of reckoning is here, and we have to act, or else we will be in that, that boat, and we're, we're, we're already jumping on board. And so, again, we, we, this is a very dire time. I, I, I can't stress that enough. So, you know, finding little ways here, and, and I understand you saying, you know, police, fire, and recognition, that's all that's in the general fund. And, 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 and there's only a small portion of that is, is your, your, your hard costs. All of it is salaries and benefits and everything else. So we don't have a lot of tools and instruments to play. We, we were trying to increase the revenue, and as Vice Mayor Klein said, we're running as fast as we can to try to get new businesses in town, but I think we have to right the ship before it goes under. And so that, I mean, I, and I appreciate, and I want to work with you as much as we can, but we, we, we have to make a change. And, and, and I don't like it, I don't want to be the guy that has to make that change, but, but unfortunately, it's, it's something that if we don't do it, then we have bigger problems citywide than just, you know, the general fund.
I, I, I agree, there's, there's a, a huge problem going on. It just feels that these shoulders are very heavy with the burden of the budget right now. It, it doesn't feel like there's other departments that are sharing the same burden. And I hope that if you do make drastic changes to the fire service, that our parks turn brown and this building closes down, and there's a lot more that can be done before we devastate the fire service.
Mayor, I would suggest, as I mentioned, sorry.
I might say, you know, on the police side, there's nine less officers. I think there were seven when Smith, Chief Smith was hired, and there was two more. Those positions haven't been filled. So, you know, they've taken some big hits already over on the, on the police side. You know, there's three or four guys working in the middle of the night. That's all we have covering the city on the police side, so now we're looking at fire.
And, and I understand and respect that you, you recognize there's four police officers on duty at night, but, and I, I've kind of brought this up before, there are truly four responding units available at night. On the fire side, there are four fire responding units at the middle of the night. That's only because our, the workload that we do is so labor-intensive. We're not just going to a quick call, we're done. We have to have that manpower, that personnel on. So we do have four responding units, and they do have four responding units. We just can't do it with one firefighter.
No, I understand that, but, you know, being a cop on the street and going to an EMS call in the middle of the night, a little different when you've got four guys out there managing the streets and pulling over a vehicle. They don't know what they're faced with anymore. And so, so I, I'm not going to argue the point, but I, I think it needs to be clear, And so, so I, I'm not gonna argue the point, but I, I think it needs to be clear, on the police side, there has been, the cuts been made. We're not funding these positions at all, and, you know, on the fireside, we haven't really made the cuts, personnel that need to be cut, honestly. That's what's gonna happen if we can't come to a conclusion here. Unfortunately, it's not gonna be rode the same way it's being rode right now. I mean, I don't want that, but we have a fiscal responsibility up here, and I know none of you guys want that.
Not at all.
And hopefully, we can figure it out to where it won't be that.
And as far as the fire cuts, we have seen significant fire cuts, I mean, we don't, we, I mean, we're sharing a, a fire chief and prevention officer, you might as well eliminate that prevention officer. He didn't receive half of that prevention officer's salary, so we're out a prevention officer. Our, if you look at the models across the, the state, our admin level is, is dramatically low. We, we have no admin support, we have our three BCS and our main fire chief. That's it. Most departments have an assistant chief, training officer chief, it just, it just goes on and on. We never received any of that, so, yeah, you didn't get to cut any of it.
Now, structure changed, obviously, when Art left. He was the Public Safety Director, and then he had chiefs under him. So, that structure did change. Now, you've got a chief in each department, no public safety director. Things, things changed.
Yeah, and I understand things changed, but we never did get a prevention chief.
No.
We're, we're out, you know, 200,000 dollars on a prevention chief. I mean, we've seen our cuts, our, our operational budget, I mean, we couldn't buy ink the other day, because we didn't have money in our budget.
Well, that's why we gotta have this, this open dialogue, that's why we need to have this, that's why we need to get this thing fixed, in my opinion, one way or the other. So, you know, I'm hoping that you guys are in this with us, and we, we do the right things for the city. Obviously, cuts, if it's closing fire stations, that's what we have to do. I don't wanna do that. I'm hoping there's another better solution to that.
If you devastate the fire service, we will not be with you.
Okay, at this point, I wanna bring it back to the council for, for more discussion and direction for the city manager and staff. Councilmember Rhino?
It sounds to me, Mayor, that you have another option? Do you have another option, other than the consultant and exploring?
Well, if everybody wants a consultant, I can, I can support going with a consultant, but I think the timeline has to be, it has to be a very defined scope, and it has to be as quick a timeline as possible, because I still think if we go down that, that path, we're, we're six months out. So, the council will have to make a decision that we're going to dip into reserves, again, for this, to get us to the point of the recommended options. But make no mistake, at the end of that six months, we'll have to make the recommended changes or come up with something, because we'll still be looking at a significant deficit.
Again, Mayor, I would recommend that Budget Workshops, less than three weeks from now, I can bring these options with some conversations to that Budget Workshop with the cost of a consultant, and you'd be able to make a decision at that point in time. You don't need to make a decision tonight, just, all I need is, I see hot knot, give me the three weeks, and you'll have the context, how it pertains to the overall budget, with what we, I, I understand, I hear where you guys are at, and wanna make sure that we're not wasting three weeks, but at the same time, you'll be able to make that decision in context of the budget, and what we're bringing to you as a draft budget on the 15th.
Can you bring a timeline, too?
Of course.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that would be the expectation. We would have a consultant, you know, at least a draft of a scope, an idea of the cost, and we're gonna get that as far as we possibly can, so you'd have that information in the context of a draft budget to be able to make your decision.
As well as contracting out, you'll have figures for that as well?
I'm sure we'll have figures, but we'll at least have a good read from the other agencies of whether they're interested in exploring this option or not.
Okay.
After they heard us talk tonight, they probably don't wanna do anything.
We'll find out.
All right, is that the, is that the direction, that you have this direction you need?
Did he hear three people?
I, I'm just looking for head nods. I, I saw some nods over on this end.
Is supportive of that?
Yes.
Yes? That's fine. All right, you have five of us. Okay. Well, thank you for, for coming, I know this is not an easy topic and one that I'm sure we all get very emotional about. Councilmember Referrals, is there anyone on the council that would like an item placed on a future agenda?
Well, I would like to, just when it comes up, the CYB contract, and talk about what we doing for in-kind services and the relationship that has with the work that we're doing there for them. You know, I had a question on our audits about the amount of expenditure that was made to clean the hood and the fryer and to service the soda machines and, and, and the water and everything like that, so, you know, that's part of the, the, the MOU agreement with CYB, so I just wanna, you know, more or less, look at the in-kind services, on how it's offsetting what we're spending, spending, to make sure that, you know, 'cause they're getting the revenue from all this stuff, so I just, you know, when it comes up time for their new contract, when we, we look at it in September, October, then at least we have that open discussion.
You, council approved a two-year agreement, I believe.
Do you wanna review that?
Are you wanting the information?
Well, I, I, you know, when CYB's over, I just wanna, I just wanna look at and review it.
You mean over with the season?
When it's, when their season's over, I just wanna look at it, review it, I don't care if, I don't care if it's you and me, one-on-one.
Okay, so, like their quarterly reporting timeframe? I just wanna make sure...
By the third quarter.
By their third quarter.
By their third quarter, third quarter this year. Okay.
Okay. Anyone else? Ms. Dean? Tom?
Hello, Mayor.
Mr. Wells?
A couple of quick items. One, just a reminder for Councilmember Drossit and Councilmember Lane, while we do have the two-plus-two-plus-two meeting tomorrow morning with the school district, tomorrow at Dr. Segal's office at 8:00 a.m. As we heard at the council a few weeks ago, the lower's law is continuing to move through the process with the county, there is a meeting that was sent to your count, your calendars this evening regarding a workshop that's being held on 4/27 this Thursday. Then LCR is conducting an event this Friday evening, and as I mentioned earlier, the Budget Workshop on, on May 15th.
It is. That's it.
Tom? Daryl? Jeremy? Brian?
Answers to a couple of questions you had, Councilmember Lane, about $130,000 a year in their Measure J for the Westport Fire Department. I know that was a long time ago, but, answering your question. And then I believe, Mayor, that you asked what the percentage of save rate was for pit crew CPR versus not. It ranges from about 36% increase in savior rate over people the way we used to do it, up to 52%, and they actually get to come home and go from the hospital. We just had one within the last 30 days, was coded on scene, coded several times on the way to the hospital, revived at the hospital, and actually came home within that same week. So, there has been quite a change. Other than that, thank you guys for your time.
Okay, thank you. Ms. McCoy? Mr. Smith? Supervisor DiMartini? Thanks for shedding some light in a heavy meeting, I appreciate that. All right, with that, does anyone on the council have anything that they would like to report? Nope. All right, well, we will go ahead and adjourn now to our next regularly scheduled meeting, which will be on Monday, May 8th at 6:00 p.m. Thank you.